My wife watches it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. The date is Wednesday, September 26, 2018. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be broadcast live on Channel 9. You will see reruns on Channel 9 throughout the week, and it will also be put on YouTube for public viewing. And we are reconvening this meeting in open session from a prior executive session meeting. And at this time, I ask that everybody stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of Mary Raposa, longtime resident of Dyke, and ask for a moment of silence in her memory, please. Thank you.
And as is customary here at our regularly scheduled meetings, at this time, we'll entertain any public input. No?
You can put them on the spot.
He's the only person. I'm sorry. He's just trying to get comfortable. There were, just so you know, if you do have public input, we also do a public input period at the end of the meeting in case anything comes up. And at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to our town administrator.
Hello, everybody. So the first, I have a few reports here. The first is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Superintendent Tom Ferry is here, so he's going to jump in. We're going to piggyback this. So we have been contacted by the state as a, we're special because we do not have a hazard mitigation plan, and they really want us to have one, which makes a lot of sense. There are pros and cons to this in the sense of timing is everything. And right now, what they're asking us to do is submit a letter of intent that Karen actually did work on today, but there's a lot of information we just don't have. We can't just mobilize ourselves at this juncture to get it done. However, this is something that Mr. Ferry feels very strongly about. I feel strongly about it. It's just, I think we could wait till next year. But I would like you to hear from him so that you can hear both sides of this. My plan is that once we can have a little bit of time, identify our primary areas that are hazardous, flooding, flood zones, we have quite a bit of those. We're already starting to work together on them with the culverts that you'll hear about later tonight, a bridge project that you'll hear about later tonight. But they want us to have this plan. If we have this plan, we can then qualify for an MVP grant, which is a, your most vulnerable planning grant. So, Tommy, want to take it away?
I don't think I can add any more. You did pretty good.
I tried.
The only difference, the MVP grant can be applied for, you know, laterally in parallel with applying for the municipal grant too. And that we can go towards the 25% that we need to consider for the hazard mitigation grant. A hazard mitigation grant is a very strong part of what needs to be established in a town when you apply for other major construction projects. They look for that to be in place. And that's one of the things that will, how you get rated on who gets what. You be at lower the toll or right up there that you are serious about climate control and your vulnerability in society. So right now, we're looking at October 1st with just a letter of intent, the first round of grants to actually, if they're interested and the town's willing to do their part. The 25% that's needed for the hazard mitigation grant, which the grant was, can be between 20,000 and 30,000, I believe. So we're looking at 25% of that. And also part of that 25%, it could be in-kind work. It doesn't have to be the actual dollar value. And like I was saying, the MVP grant can go towards that too. So it's, I talked with Bill from Serpent today, and he says a lot of times you can get 80% of your 25% done just with the initial work. We go through this dilemma every year. No one has a foresight to wrap their hands on it. I did speak with the fire chief earlier today and where would this fit in the town? Especially if we wanted to attach it to a line. And it makes sense to be in the emergency preparedness committee. And we have a professional technical line. Right now, it's only 1,500 there, but that's another chunk out of that 25% we're looking at. So it does, it sounds like it's a doable situation. As most of you know, ironically, today, we still have two streets underwater from last night's rain. We get the Willa Street and Maple Street. The Sturgess River is going to be an issue. I also have a poor rating on COVID on Horton Street, those two 10-foot pipes, those first area grills. So every crossing on the Sturgess River needs to be addressed probably in all our lifetime. They're all, they're all about the same age.
By one time, too?
Yes. And that's quite a bit of money. And all them roads, Center Street, William Street, Horton Street, Maple Street, Willa Street, those are all main roads for our town. And it's a big deal when one's blocked off. That's a big turnaround on a detour.
Tom, is the Center Street Bridge considered a bridge or is it a culvert?
It is a bridge.
Oh, okay.
And that one, no one knows the date on. We don't know what it really has for foundation. But it's pretty solid. It's not in line with the road. It's pretty solid. From time to time, it's on the small side, but it's not our highest concern, except for if it did close.
Oh.
What's your detour there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With another bridge not too far away that's currently closed. So with all that said, and a lot of them projects with federal money, they would be looking for this hazard mitigation grant that needs to be in place. And I believe our master plan also alludes to this. This needs to happen in the near future, too. So whether we don't tackle it now or we do, if we don't, we're right at the threshold of budgeting and whatnot. It's the time to get it in there. And so the dollar value we're looking at is less than $10,000.
It's seven, yeah. It's around seven.
Around seven, if we just wanted to just hire a firm to get it done. Serpent can't do this. They normally would do this type of grant for us. Would need to hire out like a CEI or TZA, a firm like that. Very doable. It's just in it, the letter of intent needs to go out by October 1st. And then we, part of that letter is how do we plan to back it up financially? And you can say exactly what I said tonight.
I have another budget I want to use. Stormwater, could stormwater?
Stormwater could. I mean, I got about 6,000 in that line. We didn't hit that on everything we did already, right?
Well, no, but.
Because if that's the case, you already have the 7-plus thousand between the two.
Tugging on my heartstrings over here. We'll be here on Friday, Tom. We'll work on this Friday. If this law is supported.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to plan ahead. Absolutely. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you very much, Mr. Ferry, as always.
So do we need to take a vote on this then?
Is there a procedural we need to do to sort of set the wheels in motion?
You would need to vote to send a letter of intent. And we'll compile that.
Okay.
And it's going to go to?
It goes to Mima?
Yeah, this program. And a lot of this information I received one year at a conference. So I can do a lot myself when I need to. People there with our governor and lieutenant governor really pushing this issue.
We're also on the shortlist. We will likely receive this because we're on the shortlist to do it.
Because they really want us to do it. Okay, well, we got to answer the call.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send a letter of intent to Mima regarding our hazardous mitigation plan.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. After this vote, can you, just due to the interest in time, will you please make another motion that would designate that I can sign for you on your behalf? I know that I can, but that will just shore things up.
Okay.
Because I'll be sending this on Friday or Monday, and I don't.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
All right. You're very welcome. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have, that we authorize the town administrator to sign the letter of intent to Mima regarding our hazardous mitigation plan.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you again, everybody. Selectman Goulart, Town Administrator Aaronstein, and Superintendent Ferry, very much. And continue.
Great. So we have an update on passports, which I know myself and Karen and probably Selectman Pacheco are very excited about. So we had asked that the library look into providing this service. We think it's a great service to have. It's just inundating town hall right now due to a variety of reasons. So we've reached out to the library. They've agreed. In further information and research, only one location in one town can be designated as the passport place. So this will eventually move to the library. There is a series of trainings and naming of a regional coordinator and some other things that have to happen. But with your blessing, if you vote that we move passports, begin the process to move the passport service to the library, that can certainly be done. I believe Jocelyn Tavarez, the library director, did submit the paperwork or will be submitting it today, tomorrow, excuse me.
Okay. My only question on this, and it is good news. And I've seen the need for a solution to the passport issue for a long time. I guess my question would be, is this going to affect anything in the clerical CBA or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Perfect.
There is a stipend that goes along with issuing the passports. So the staff here will lose that stipend. But I believe it's a better service to be provided at the library. They're open, better hours for the public, Saturdays, Fridays, in the sense of families who need to come. If you have a, if you're getting a child passport, both parents have to be there. There's a little bit more space to take care of that in the library. So there's a variety of logistical things that go along with it. But there's nothing in the clerical contract that prevents us from moving this service around.
And you'll get people into the library.
To the library. Yep.
I'll make a motion then that we start the process of transferring the issuing of passports to the library.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Karen, Mrs. Brady, excuse me, not only for being awesome at passports, but assisting in this process and just being great. Just in general, being great.
Glad to get rid of the ayes.
I know it was a lot for you, Mrs. Brady, and we, I just appreciate you taking that on. And then be also, you know, being part of having the library do it from here on out. So the solution as well. So you have the best.
The post office is going to miss your racing.
Those daily trips. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. It's your show.
I know, I'm sorry. I was at class today and my brain is.
I understand.
So more good news. So we have this policy review board that takes a look at any employment policies. It's made up of each of the unions as well as non-union, which is also Jocelyn Tavarez, who's doing quite a bit of work for us. Anyway, we reviewed the vehicle use policy, which actually kicked off this whole process. We found that we had not actually bargained any of our employment policies. So that's why, just a quick recap, that's why we have this policy review board and that we're redoing a lot of these policies. So the vehicle use policy was voted recommended by that committee, as you have it tonight. And the drug-free workplace was also voted, was also recommended by this committee. And I just would like to thank them for all their work reviewing it. And they assembled very quickly so that we could make this vote and get it, get it in time for this budget, for this meeting, excuse me.
So I can't, I apologize. I had a long day at work. Did we, okay, let me back up. These are kind of long.
Yes.
And we have another policy that we need to read. And so since this is kind of what I would characterize as more of an internal policy for the town and doesn't affect, you know, residents at large, for example, are you recommending we not read these?
I don't think it's necessary. We do have these publicly available.
Yeah. And can we, can we still wait like the three meetings? And just will, if anyone has any comments? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, we can post it.
Yeah. And then if anybody has any feedback?
So just to let the public know, these policies in draft form and our other policies that have been accepted are located on our website under Board of Selectmen. There's a link for policies. Actually, if you hover, you'll get the menu and you can click right there and see all of the policies and read them at your leisure. They're there for you. So the, I think they're in reverse chronological order.
They are. Yep.
So drafts are on the top.
The newest ones on the top. Yep.
And the drug-free workplace, just a little fun fact. If the town wants to keep receiving federal funding when horrible storms happen, we need to have this.
Absolutely. And I thank you, not for just crafting these, and I know you did, but also for kind of navigating that bureaucratic process and getting, you know, the employee, the union representatives to buy in. And everybody's happy, so.
I'm actually happy. I wouldn't normally work with them, so it's nice to relate to them on that level.
Sometimes if the price of gasoline goes up and down and all of the IRS changes during the year. So I'm wondering if instead of saying January 1st, if we should say shall be equivalent to the prevailing IRS rate at the time of travel? Because I can remember in the past, it's like the middle of the year, the thing has changed.
But we're supposed, we vote on it every year?
Yeah, but what happens is when it changes, Jen immediately brings it to our attention. So that's why I'm saying, instead of having the January date, saying the prevailing rate at the time. So if it changes during the year, it would come to us for a vote.
So can we just add a line that says, should this rate change?
In the course of the year.
In the course of the year, the prevailing rate at the time will prevail.
Be paid out, or whatever that language is.
Yes.
Are you okay with that, Selectman Goulart?
Well, I'm thinking of, we've got too many prevails and prevailing.
I know, I gotta.
So if we say shall be equivalent to the prevailing IRS rate in effect at the time of travel, that way, and at the time of travel and as approved by the Board of Selectmen. Because to change that rate, even though the IRS changes it, it has to come back to us. And I know there was a period of time, because when I was doing a travel form, I remember calling and saying, did this change again? And they said, yeah, it changed on this time. And it was during the time of fluctuation when, you know, gas was going crazy.
So it will read, "The town reimbursement rate for employees who use their personal vehicles for official use shall be equivalent to the IRS rate in effect at the time of travel and approved by the Board of Selectmen when such use is documented with an official reimbursement form attached heretofore."
You just missed the word prevailing before IRS. But everything else was correct. Okay with that, Selectman?
I do have some questions about.
Sure.
So both then talk about drug testing, obviously the drug policy, but also the vehicle usage. What do we mean by random drug testing?
That means they don't, like, we'd come in that day and say, okay, you know, they don't get, okay, on October 4th, you're going to be, you know, submitted for drug test. That's all that means.
Yeah. But are we doing this every three months? Every six months? Every year?
So the CDLs are quarterly, and it's by random selection.
Right.
So that's governed by something outside of us a little bit. And we just administer that.
And I noticed that you're testing for marijuana. Marijuana's legal. And all the tests that I'm aware of, I don't tell you if these have been smoked or used within a half hour or three weeks ago. So how are we going to deal with that?
So we cannot allow marijuana use in the workplace and accept federal funds. So that's, that's why these two are together. If that makes sense? That's why these two policies are coming together.
So but what are we going to do?
So if that's the case, you have to sit down with them and talk about it. On a case-by-case basis. They'd have to be called in.
Even though marijuana, that the state legalized it.
But it's still illegal to drive.
It's still legal to drive, to do it.
No, but you can, you know, we, I worked for the courthouse. And we did drug testing on a regular basis randomly. We would test, the day somebody got put on probation and was told to be drug-free, we were testing that day. A lot of times they were positive for marijuana. We would tell them they got 30 days. We're not going to test them. We won't test them for marijuana, but we'll test them for other drugs. But in 30 days, they have to be clean from marijuana. So even though it shows that they're positive for marijuana, it doesn't mean they smoked it that morning. A lot of times they did before they went to court. I get that, but.
Fact of life, folks.
Hell of anxiety, maybe.
Yes. And don't let that one here make you think that I'm out there smoking a pot of nicotine. I was a probation officer for 35 years. Haven't smoked in over 35 years. But it is legal. I just want to make sure that we're not going to penalize somebody who legally smokes it at their home on a Saturday night. They come into work Monday, not under the influence of marijuana. And I don't want them to get penalized or jeopardized.
So in that case, we can't because we can't tell somebody what to do on their, on their own time. But if we suspected they might be under the influence of something and they were driving one of our vehicles, we absolutely can step in, even if it is marijuana, and you violated this policy and the drug-free workplace policy.
But that CDL driver who's getting randomly tested every three months, we test them as a positive drug test for marijuana. How will we?
You have to sit down and ask them. Because they might have a medicinal marijuana card.
Right.
And the policy is that they're supposed to tell their.
They're supposed to tell them.
They're supposed to tell us so that we're aware of that.
Right.
So then they kind of would get, in my opinion, maybe a slap on the wrist. Like, hey, you're supposed to tell us when you are under a prescription drug. And that's outside of marijuana. That's anything that could impair you.
And even if they have a prescription, they can't be high.
You cannot do it at work.
Be high when they're working. And I understand that. I just don't want to stop penalizing people for legally using marijuana in their own home recreational use. And what type of testing are we talking about? Are we talking about, no?
I know, I love it though.
No, are we using, well, don't anybody be offended, but we pee cups?
Love it, yours. So that's what they go through right now?
Pee cups. Why aren't we using swabs? I know they're more expensive, but why aren't we?
We're not doing the testing, but a third-party firm is doing that.
So what happens? They come?
They come.
They show up on a Tuesday, for example, and test all the employees?
Randomly selected, and I hand them their notice the morning of. They don't know when they're going, and they have to report.
And they go to the place to be tested? Okay. So whatever they.
They're outside of it, and then we get the note. Like, should there be a positive? Or a negative, actually, we're sent it.
And also if they, even though it may be legalized in mass, CDL is federally popular. So it's.
It's off limits.
I can't make illegal standing there, but it doesn't sound like it's a good thing.
There's also an MCAD case right now. I actually don't know if it's been decided or not, but there was an MCAD case about a firefighter who had insomnia and was using marijuana for his insomnia. And the town was like, you can't be a firefighter. And he said, why? I medically prescribed this. So I don't know where that is right now, but it's, it's coming up. Unfortunately, we just sort of have to wait this out about how to act. But I don't think, in my personal opinion, my professional opinion, I don't think that we should have a looser policy at this juncture because we just don't know. We can always go back and amend this. And it's on the record that these are your concerns. As far as CDL, though, I think Superintendent Ferry is absolutely right that it's federally issued. It's mandatory that.
So who gets the results besides you, then? If it's, so you get the results? How does the federal government get involved in that?
You keep it.
It's your CDL.
Do you lock them in your office?
Which means they can be inspected by a federal inspector. And they're looking to see if you are in compliance with the federal drug law and if you are receiving federal money, they can threaten to stop that.
Okay.
Until it's federally recognized, is it?
I think at some point it's going to be, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I just think we have to be cautious there.
Well, is there, do you want to, do you want me to work on something? That would.
If, as long as it's legal and it doesn't impact the highway department, the CDL licensing, and see what's available in language and stuff like that.
Being a policy, you can change it easier.
Right. Well, that's it. And then once we get these determinations. See, MCAD determinations are very helpful because it's basically like case law, and then you can navigate based on what they ruled.
Can, another question about the town vehicle use. On the first page, it says they have to prove that they have a valid license every three years. Why do we wait three years? Do we on our own check with the registry of motor vehicles every year or annually to make sure someone has a valid license?
To be honest, I don't think anything like that is happening right now.
Is that something we might want to consider? Because things, people get arrested, we're not aware of it. They lose their license. They could be driving a town vehicle.
For half a year. Yeah, for a period of time. Are you suggesting that we change that number? And if you are, what do you?
I think I would like to see it annually. I think I would like to see it annually. We can discuss it, obviously, and I would, who, who does that now? Who would do the?
So it's the department, what do you mean, who does that?
Who would check with the registry, because not everybody has access with the registry of motor vehicles. I can't just call up and say, what's the status of Tom Ferry's license?
So how I envision this is, I'm going to apply to be a highway person, and I'm going to give my, my license that has my embellishments on it and hand it over to Tom, and he's going to say, yep, that's a real license.
And a year later, when this, after this person's been hired, we, we're just going to ask for it every three years?
I said every three years. If we change this, this is a substantive change, and I'd bring this back to the policy review board. And I expect them to have problems.
Sure, are you comfortable with?
Yes, I'm comfortable with the fact that they agreed to have us keep checking after employee, employment. So, I mean, I know, but I feel that we'd be able to deduce if there was an issue like that, if we suspected. I mean, nothing in here prevents us from suspicion and following up, but.
So your stance is to keep it as is? The thing, the language that was already sort of signed off?
I think three years is a fair compromise between an employer, who, I have these concerns too, and an employee who's like, I'm just trying to get my job done. That's a little over the, you know, over the top, maybe they would say. And I think this is a fair compromise.
Selecting Gular.
No, I was just listening to this, and my only thought was, we used to do this when Rehoboth had its own school buses, because they were employees of the town, and they were driving school buses. I don't know if the regulations for a school bus driver are more restrictive in that as far as keeping track of making sure their licenses are valid and also their driving records. Ring any bells with you?
I think my department is probably more stringent. They're forced to, I mean, two years, some of my guys are every one year because of the medical card that's required to maintain a license. That expires in two years depending on the level of the year evaluated. And the hoisting license, it was only good for two years. You can't have a hoisting license without a valid license. So there's a lot of redundancy here already, and so your policy is probably null and void at that point.
But there's more than just highway that drives our vehicles.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but.
I could potentially drive the vehicle. You'd want to see that I have a license.
Well.
Probably, we got our eye on you.
Well, if, if you're comfortable with it, I don't, I was looking for a substantial change.
It's okay, I have no problem bringing it back to them. I just caution you that I think it would be a sticking point.
I'm okay with the three years. Do you have a preference?
No, no, I don't have a prob, I have a.
Are you okay with the three year?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So instead of you bringing it back, why don't you just send them an email and ask them? Like, you don't have to have.
To go to one year?
Correct.
I, well, I think the board's okay with it, though, right?
Yeah, but, but I'm respecting your concern.
I just don't want to. I just don't want to.
Ask them. Because I'm also okay with one year, so if they don't have a problem with it.
You thought I'd have the answer.
Well, I think, I think, I think I know what they're going to say, so.
I do, too.
So for now, we'll keep it three years, as I understand, and if you could send the board an email and just kind of ask them what they think about it.
Well, the question we'll have to say, the board is considering adopting the policy to say, you have to show your valid driver's license every year. Do you think we need to meet on this? And if one of them says yes, we have to.
So do you not want to send?
No, no, I'll send the email, but I'm not going to come out and be like, what do you think about this? Because that would be a violation of open mind.
Yeah, I understand.
So I will email, gladly, I'll email them.
Okay.
I'll say, you told me this was a once a month thing, and you keep emailing.
We don't have time to meet. And just so the public knows, the language that you'll see if you are really bored and are checking our policy webpage will be three years until we get a further clarification on that.
Any other changes you want me to?
Yeah, anything on the drug-free workplace, for example?
Nope.
Selectmen Pacheco?
I think I'm satisfied.
All right.
Well, you're going to work on the little clarification on the marijuana situation.
Well, I was actually just going to ask that question about, so specifically, what do you want me to ask them? And is it outside of highway? Is it everybody?
I, I think it's going to be everybody.
Well, no, I mean, his, it would apply to everybody, but his concern, I want to make sure it's not just this random drug test that you're worried about, that like, everybody would have.
Well, I want clarification on marijuana. It's, like I said, it's legal. I don't want someone's job to be jeopardized if they're using it recreationally. Obviously, if they're, I wouldn't want anybody under the influence of drugs or alcohol while they're employed, an employee of the town or working as an employee of the town. I wouldn't want them driving a vehicle. I wouldn't want somebody on a weekend driving high with a vehicle. I feel the same way about drunk drivers. But marijuana is legal in Massachusetts now, and I don't want to penalize that person who on Friday night, who's not working, smoking pot in his own home, and comes to work Monday and is going to show up on his drug test.
I just, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just feel this is a very slippery slope for a variety of reasons, specifically like emergency situations. Like, we need to make it clear, if they're going to do that, and we're going to be an employer that is okay with that, you cannot show up to work in an emergency situation. Like, if it's Friday night and it's January and it's snowing, I expect, or predicted snow, I expect the entire highway department to not be doing that, because they might need to report. What about the, the call firefighter? Like, if we have a massive, so, it needs, right, but we need to set this expectation. If we're going to come out in this policy, in one policy, we're saying we're a little, we're okay with what you do on your own time because it's legal, like, that's a statement we're making. But understand, you are not to show up.
Well, that's, that's pretty clear, though.
Okay, I just.
I thought.
No, I thought it was pretty clear that you can't come to work under the influence of a drug or alcohol.
Including in emergent situations.
If I was a call firefighter, I probably wouldn't smoke at all, obviously. If I, highway department and it's Friday night and I look out the window, it's snowing, I, I wouldn't want to get high, because I wouldn't be able to go to work if I was called in to go to work. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to penalize some employees for doing something that's perfectly, perfectly legal.
I don't mean to be that person, but I'm going to be that person. I actually, this is tough for me, because I actually, I totally understand his point, and I strongly feel the same way he does. But I also understand your point, which is if someone, and I know we have great employees, so I'm not, I'm not speaking for anyone in particular.
Not hypothetical.
But I, I think that the slippery slope argument is true, because if somebody knows that their answer when they meet with Mallory, if there's a potential violation and something shows up on a drug test positive, if they know, they can say, oh, no, that was over the weekend when I wasn't working, yeah, that's not from today. That, I, I get, it kind of binds, it makes the policy almost pointless.
Right, and there's, there's no validation.
I totally get your point, and I don't have the answer, but I'm just trying to highlight, like, for the public, like, what, what the issue that we're debating here is, and it's, it's, it's tough.
Well, they need to come up with better testing. They need to come up with tests that shows that marijuana was ingested or smoked very recently versus.
But because it's federally illegal, there were so many restrictions, like, you could, we finally figured out that marijuana eats cancer cells, but it took us this long because it was not legal, so it's frustrating. We need, exactly.
And they didn't allow testing, didn't allow.
So we need just time to play out. We need time to allow for the technology to catch up, and we need time for MCAD to tell us what to do, essentially.
Isn't there a law about higher, and I'm trying to think, I put safety officials as a no smoking.
No smoking.
Well, if you can't smoke tobacco, you can't smoke.
But you can do other things to ingest marijuana, even though right now they're not legal to buy.
I know. You know, I understand, all I'm saying is that no smoking thing is smoking anything.
One would follow the other. Right, one would follow the other. I agree.
No, I realize you can ingest. In all honesty, somebody who may be ill or recovering, who was given a prescription and said, take all of this, and maybe it's not an antibiotic, and maybe they still have some pain or something, they should not be showing up for work either and operating in a vehicle, you know?
Absolutely.
And I think that's noted in this also.
Yeah.
If prescribed medication influences your, your job at work.
Your job, and it also references the drug-free workplace policy, which I feel very strongly that it needs to.
Yeah.
Okay, so, to be continued. We'll work on that.
Okay.
But will I be able to post it the way it's written?
It's already up there. It's already up there.
It's already been posted.
It's been there for quite a few days. We didn't get any emails, so I know nobody's checking.
I was challenged on the website and couldn't post it, but Brett saved me.
Oh, yeah, that was hilarious.
Smoked it, I promise.
It was really funny. We'll talk about that later. Under old, is it Madam Administrator?
Yes, I'm done. That's my report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So again, for the public, we're going to keep for now the policies as is, and you'll see them on the website as they were prepared this evening. And thank you again, Madam Administrator. And at this time, we're going to move on to old business. Actually, before we do, Mr. Ferry, is it okay with my colleagues if, since we have Mr. Ferry here, we can go out of order?
We take some things out of them, okay. So we got, which ones do we have?
Complete Streets, maybe Old Business 7B.
Okay, so 7B, and then we'll move to the, the new business ones.
New business.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 7B out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. And this is on amending the vote on the cost of the Complete Streets easement work, Superintendent Perry.
This is actually mine, I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
So we heard from our, well, you can stay there, be quick, we heard from our.
Appraiser.
Appraiser, wow, thank you.
It's been a long night.
And we voted on an amount at our last meeting. The amount needs to be increased by about $500. It's not a substantive change. So we're here just to amend that motion to award it to Mr. Claude Giraud at $12,650. And so the public is aware, this is our appraiser that we've called upon regularly to help us out with this kind of work.
Absolutely. And so that would be a cost increase of $550 from what we originally voted for, which is under five percent. I'm accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the $550 increase in contract for Claude Giraud, our appraiser for the Complete Streets program.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, how do we get to this point, and how do we get to this figure, and then how we're going to increase? I know it's only $550, but that's $550, that's $550 of our money. No, I have that.
He indicated that there was an error in his calculation.
He did it, the person who knew how to do it, do it. That's what happened, in all honesty.
Well, I just think we ought to be cautious when we, we vote on something, we have, please, can I just, please?
I can tell you. This is, I'm sorry.
We need to be cautious when it comes to money like this, when we vote on money, that they're giving us the right figure, and they're not coming up two weeks, three weeks, four weeks later with a higher figure. Because this is taxpayers' money that we're talking about.
Selectmen Gular?
Yeah, this is the first time this has ever happened with Claude Giraud, I can tell you that.
And I, and I've been here, you've been here longer than me, but I've been here for two and a half years.
Right, and he was, the first project was Berkeley, down at Bridge.
Yep.
When I read this, my assistant just got back in from sick leave and showed me the correct notation, and I'm thinking, okay.
Get Mr. Giraud away from the computer, please.
Yes.
But I, I agree with you, though. We can't, we can't keep coming back, because you don't, you know, it makes it look like we don't know what we're doing.
Right.
In reality, we didn't prepare this figure.
Right.
So I apologize, public, but I can assure you, Mr. Giraud has helped us on other projects, as Selectmen Gular alluded to. And I believe he assisted with the Center Street.
Yes.
Cyborg project as well.
That was very good.
Which came out very well.
Right. The other thing, too, is it's difficult to get an appraiser to do this kind of work, and he, there have been instances when we needed him, like, yesterday, and he's crunched some stuff to, to step up and help us, so, you know.
We have a good relationship, so we forgive you, Mr. Giraud.
Twenty-two separate properties. So I just want that to be clear, that this isn't one property, this is twenty-two.
This is the largest one in number.
So we have a motion and a second, I believe.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes.
So the two items for Mr. Ferry are K and L.
Okay.
Although he may be interested in C, D, and E, but what he's here to speak about are K and L.
All right, A through Z, Mr. Ferry.
Give me a grant or two, too, so, there you go.
We'll give him, we'll give him the option. Do we want to skip further down to the snowplow rates, or do you want to, do you want to be here for C, D, and E? I know you prepared stuff for us.
I would like them.
I haven't seen the agenda, but this, I'm ready with the snowplow rates now.
Yes, this is all bids for culvert repair, culvert repair, and Pleasant Street Bridge.
Yes, I would like them to be here for C.
Okay, all right. Selectmen Pacheco?
Spoken.
So, this isn't going to take long. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we take in the order, that we take in the next order, Agenda Items A, C, D, and E, next.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. Mr. Ferry?
See, he doesn't have the agenda, right? You don't have the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ferry.
No, you're on the Tremont Street Culvert.
Award bid for Tremont Street Culvert Repair Project.
Okay. So Mallory has the bid results there. She doesn't, she's not sharing them with me.
I shared them.
No, she did share them with me. We conversed on it, and we agree on the recommendation of J and R Precast out of Berkeley.
We went out to bid for this project. We did a site visit. We received two bids. The lowest was J and R Precast at $17,855. This is delivery in place, so we're basically getting a custom-made reinforced concrete culvert to be delivered in place. The other bidder was at $25,000. The, if you're wondering, the difference in price is directly related to prevailing wage. J and R Precast is owner-operated, and because he'll be doing the driving, he does not get prevailing wage. But if you have to subcontract that out, you have to pay prevailing wage for that. So that is the relationship. But both, Tom and I agree, J and R Precast is our recommendation for this project. Thank you.
And I'm in favor of the bid. I looked at the, both bids. But I do want to comment, I've had a conversation with Mr. Ferry, but I've also had a conversation with Jim and Lynn Cabral, who are farmers on Tremont Street. And they feel that they're really going to be impacted if this work is done this fall, if it's done in October and November. This is their busy season. As everybody knows, we're rights of farm community. It's not just a slogan, it's a real thing, and I would not want to impact their business. We've had a conversation about this. Fortunately, Mother Nature has given us a lot of rain that may be preventing this from being done in the fall. But I would ask a commitment that this is not done this fall, that it be done when you take its best, July and August, when things are dry, and it's not as much water. Doesn't impact the farm like it would right now. So I would, I'm all in favor of the bid, but I would ask for some commitment that we're not going to do it this fall.
Mr. Ferry, is this something that needs, you know, I, I worked on rights of farms, so it's near, near and dear to my heart, but I need the expertise. Is this something that could wait, honestly?
At this time, we have to wait for the amount of water that we're dealing with. We, there's no way of pumping this, the amount of water that's going through that culvert now. That culvert is rotted, and it is depressed in a few areas. We can monitor closely. Worst-case scenario, we could put the steel plates on it, like we did on Horton Street. And by the way, this is the same size culvert that we installed on Horton Street, and also the same manufacturer. But the amount of water, there's no way we can do it right now.
Okay.
So the small dilemma we have, I'll have to lean on Mallory for this, is the bid is for constructing delivery in place. It's a local, small company. I'd rather still build it so it's ready, but then he still needs to be paid, but he can't be paid in full until it's in place. Well, is there a way of doing that?
Nope, we'd have to throw out the bid and redo it. We can't, we can't. Because, as I just said, the difference in price is directly related to the delivery. So if they're just making it, that would be a different price.
Oh, and it might be a different price at a different time of the year.
No, 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 still, still install it, but give him a partial payment until it's installed. Or, or we delay.
Uncomfortable doing that.
You're uncomfortable.
You're uncomfortable.
I'm uncomfortable partially paying for something when the contract is for two things. And I, I'm not going to speak for her, but I don't want to have to explain that to the town of Calhoun, so.
So how about the, I'm not speaking to the vendor about this yet. How about we wait for it to be constructed, like, constructed in June, so it can be installed when the weather's ready and when that, so he's not on the hook for the materials, that timeframe. Is that too far out, still?
I think so, because there's no, there's no guarantee that we're going to have a dry spring or a dry June. June has been wet before.
No, I mean, contractual, I mean, still have it built and installed next summer.
I don't think I could have a, I don't think the bid would be good for that long. I wouldn't be comfortable having a bid carryover, especially where prevailing wage is a very time-sensitive item. I just, I don't, we'd throw out the bid. If, to achieve what you're looking to achieve, we throw out the bid and we do it again, which I don't particularly think that we should do. I think we can work with the, the farmers and try to find another route. I don't think that it's wise to wait based on that.
Well, we.
But if there's a water issue, that's something different, and we have to throw out the bid.
We definitely have a water issue now.
I do think it is wise to wait for the, for the farm. I mean, if, if we can throw it out because of the water, because we can't do it, then why can't we also take into consideration, you know, we're a rights of farm community. This will impact them greatly, I'm told, financially. I don't want to see that land become houses. We should be supporting our farmers, and if there's a way that we can do it, we ought to do it. And if it means that we don't go forward with the bid today, I'm okay with that, because I don't think we ought to be impacting this, this farm. And I, you already indicated that it can't be done anyway this fall, because I went by there today, the water's very high. I don't see the water going down this time of the year. So it doesn't sound like it's going to get done anyway.
Can I, can I ask, I'm sorry.
You're sure, no?
Can I ask, regarding the water, when, let's say we did approve the bid this evening, when do you realistically think would be the earliest you could start anyway?
At this time, probably July.
Oh.
But the dilemma, I'm hearing from Mallory, it's not going to work.
This is not going to be good for July.
So we could rebid it now, just for the material, and install it in July, and that'd be a separate contract for the crane service.
The only reason, I know that I'm probably sounding like I'm being difficult, and I'm not trying to.
No, no.
And I certainly support farmers and farming communities. I'm from a farming community, so I get it. But I always am, I've trained myself to look at the worst-case scenario, and the worst-case scenario is something bad happens to the street and that's a sinkhole. That's the worst-case scenario. The other bad scenario is being sued in a bid protest. So when I look at the documents, I really don't think we can split up the payment based upon building first and then delivery. Because we asked for delivery in place, and if we were going to do two different payments, it's not really fair to the business either that you're, you're not giving them all the money. Like, usually, small businesses need a cash flow, so you're not going to give them all the money right away. So I, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to do, is get, come up on your contract a partial payment.
But if that's the case, you're supposed to, you're supposed to list that in your scope, and we didn't do that, because I wasn't anticipating that at all, number one. Number two, the delivery part is what kicks in prevailing wage, which is time-sensitive. The prevailing wage sheets are only good for ninety days, and you got to get new ones. I know that this potential guy doesn't, let's ask, this guy isn't subject to prevailing wage. Let me, I'll call the thirty, I'll talk to them tomorrow, I'm going to be in their office. I'll ask them tomorrow.
So why, can I ask, really, maybe I'm not understanding something here. So if the work in a best-case scenario can't start till July anyway, why would we consider the bid tonight anyway?
Well, I, that's just news to me. I wasn't told that it couldn't be done.
Okay, then that makes sense. I understand, okay. Well, I'm sorry, you know I love you. I'm going to, I think Selectmen Pacheco is right on this.
All right, so I'm just going to ask this. I don't want you to throw out the bid tonight.
You know I didn't know.
Because I want to have the opportunity to speak with the Inspector General's office about this, because it's weather-related.
And I appreciate you doing your. And I appreciate you doing your diligence. And if something changes, then I expect that you would bring this back to us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's probably the best-case scenario at this point, yes.
Okay.
Because it could be expedited, or we know what we need to do, yes.
I did want to ask if Selecting Goulart had any comments.
Yeah, if we didn't have the rain that we got, which was close to four inches, according to the weather report today, when would this, and we awarded this tonight, when would this work be done?
Late October.
Okay. If we got a dry spell, if we awarded this tonight contingent on the weather, and you determine, because of the weather, there is no way that this work can be done before snow flies, before winter sets in, where are we with that bid? I'm seeing two sides of this. We got a small company that's come up with a dollar amount that's a good amount.
Great price.
We have families on Tremont Street, and I'm not singling out the farm. We have, that's a heavily-traveled road. I use it myself almost every day. But I'm also looking at the liability of the town. I remember this, what happened on Horton Street, and how, when that thing went put, you put out the steel plates and, you know. That street is extremely heavily-traveled, and the school buses up and down, and the kids and everything else, so. I'm trying to weigh the interest of the farm and everyone who uses that road, and the little business here that has made a good offer, and then we get the liability of the town. That's what my concerns are. So if you, I think it's a good idea that the town administrator contact the Inspector General's office and run some of these things by him. Now, if we get a good stretch of weather, even into late November or early December, meaning we don't have snow, is it possible it could, how, Tom, how long is this whole thing going to take?
Once when I know the culvert has been constructed.
Right.
We will set the date, notify the public as, as far advanced as possible. The road could be closed for as long as three weeks straight, no passage at all.
How long was Horton Street down?
I believe that was four weeks. This, this one here, we should be okay. We do have to relocate the water main also on this project.
So was the October potential construction date, had that been worked out with the water district or?
Yes, they have the supplies ready to go.
Oh, so they're waiting.
They're waiting on us.
Oh, okay, all right, I see, yeah.
So I, I do like the Inspector General idea, at, at least for him to weigh in on it. You guys are meeting next week anyways?
Correct, yep. Maybe we'll have an update.
Right.
I'll be speaking with them tomorrow, at class.
I appreciate your patience.
If there's any way that, that we could get, we could award the bid, but if we can't do it, we won't lose it because of the circumstances we're describing.
I am wrapping my brain if we wrote something about weather permitted in our scope. I think that we did, because I remember having this conversation. Of course, it's in my office.
Could that be something we look at too before next week?
I mean, do we look at it tonight after the meeting?
Well, fortunately, you are in that class, and you know, the class itself.
So I'm going to bring all of this stuff.
If I may also, it, it does take about three weeks from the construct it. And obviously, he's not going to put his time and materials into it unless he knows he has the contract. So it's.
Of course.
We're getting tighter and tighter here.
I understand.
And, and I want to really look at an overlay on that road in the near future. I'd rather the culvert settle for a winter, go through a freezing thaw also, to avoid a frost heave-type situation on a new road.
I don't like frosties.
So if we have to delay another road, and maybe just shim the road next year, we can consider that too, but I'm willing to work with you.
And is this culvert between Forest Street and Middle Street?
No.
Where is it?
It's just west of the Silver Farm. The first, first set of guardrails.
Oh, going towards William Street?
Yes, just first set of guardrails west of that farm.
Okay. If there's any way we could even authorize construction of the culvert?
Well, I think our best bet is to do that, get them to create it, but you want it to freeze in thaw, so that means it delays paving another day, another year, I mean, right?
I, I think.
The best-case scenario is if they tell us, because the low bidder, this is my gut here, because the low bidder is an owner-operator, not subject to prevailing wage, that's thrown out the window. And I don't know what they'll tell me about whether or not we can pay upon the creation, the, the building of the culvert, and then pay for delivery later. I don't know what they'll say on that.
Well, the other one would be, no, it's, it's delivery and installation, right?
That's what, and it said, "and."
Right.
Because if we had two different contractors, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
It'd be fine.
So the question is, what applies, what is the appropriate way to handle it, whether it's one, one contractor? Because if we had two, we could say, "Well, we got it, but I'm sorry, sir, there's no way," or he'd be saying, "I can't install that now."
I'm hoping that our scope says weather permitting, and that the IG will tell me that I can draft a contract that will pay for the creation, the building of the culvert, and then get delivery later, and that because the low bidder is not subject to prevailing wage, that that doesn't matter. Everybody hope, that's what they say.
So what we're looking for is a delay in delivery and installation, if we can.
If we can. And then you're saying July, so now this becomes a multi-year contract, which is another set of issues, because we didn't bid it out that way. So if it can be June, that's the only way this works.
But, but the residents you spoke to specifically said July, correct?
They would prefer July and August. Don't forget, schools be out also in July and August, so it won't impact the, the school buses. But this time, October, November seriously impacts them, and I would not be in favor of approval, recommending this if I knew it was going to be approved, it was going to be done this fall.
I, I.
Unless there was an emergency, unless we thought it was imminent that it was going to collapse, which I don't believe we're at that point.
I, I was the one pushing for the delivery in place. When I did the Main Street Culvert, I, we were burned in that one. They charged us for another set, which they thought they could reach. That, that one was a skew setup, slightly on angle. And they still couldn't do it. They had to have another crane. So we had two large cranes and a site to set a culvert, so. If I put it this way, I'm feeling we have better control on the, obviously, you're looking at a fifty or sixty thousand dollar job if it was done split up and just prevailing wage.
Yeah. Well, and this company's been around since the fifties. It's the third generation that owns this company, so they, they've been around for a while. So I, I would suspect that they're going to work with us, and if we don't approve the bid now, and we do it again next spring for the summer, then it would be very close to this figure that we're talking about now.
Yeah, I just don't want them on the hook for the materials.
If we can do it now, then I'm all in favor. Do it now as far as purchasing stuff, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but not doing the work now.
Okay.
So you're going to give us a report next week? Put this on the agenda.
And any more?
Remember when Nancy said this wouldn't take long?
From now on, you start with the second one. You, don't go with your gut. Okay, since you're still here and haven't run away, Mr. Ferry.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we table wanting the bid for the Tremont Street Culvert until next week when we have additional information.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. And according to the motion that was approved, next is award the bid for the Bridge Street Culvert Repair Project.
I'm almost afraid to talk about this now, no. Just kidding. But we solicited some information from qualified companies that actually have success working with DER, who awarded us this grant, and Mastiot, because their standards are involved, Mastiot. So we're looking for engineers that have those qualifications. The lowest bid was Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., CEI, and they came in at seventy-six, sorry, my packet's now all over. Oh, here it is, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and three, which if you remember, we actually were awarded a bid for ninety-two thousand and some change. So this is well under, which is great news. The person that we've been dealing with, Carrie Banks at Fish and Wildlife, is actually happy with all three of the bidders, so we're going with the lowest, saving some money.
So the recommendation is Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars.
And we would start that right away.
Okay. We don't have any farmers over there? I'm just teasing you.
You're teasing the farmers, not me.
But they're not closing the road, so that's good. They're not closing the road over here, so nobody should. It is, it is a narrow road, so if you do see people out there and you're driving, just be careful. But they are aware of it being kind of the one-way in and out.
Okay.
They know that, so they'll be there to do a good job.
Any comment on this, Mr. Ferry? Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions on this before we, I accept motions? Okay, I'm entertaining motions.
I'll make a motion that Comprehensive Environmental, Inc., in the amount of seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars, be awarded this contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, Tom, I did have a, a question. How long is it going to take to do this? Are there any houses west of where this is going to go in?
This is not for construction, this is just a design committee. And that park has to be digged out, because we do have one missing dump, and how to do that.
This is, this is Suncan Brook.
Yes.
This is Suncan.
Suncan Brook, where it joins at the safety.
All right, okay.
This is also a strict timeline. The grant requires us to hit certain benchmarks, and that was included in the bid docs, and they've basically sworn that they're going to do that for us, so.
Let's see, so this is, so award the bid for the Bridge Street Culvert Repair Project. It's engineering services?
It's right.
Is that what we, all right.
Right.
All right, so I, I just propose a friendly amendment for engineering services. So we understand it's not the project, or say.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. And next is to award the bid for the Pleasant Street Bridge over Muddy Cove Brook.
Pleasant Street Bridge is a little bit in disrepair with some exposed rebar, so it's time to address that. And Weston Sampson provided us with a proposal. At the end of this proposal, we're going to receive a type plan, which will give us options similar to what Serpide provided us with the Somerset, Old Somerset Avenue, Tremont Street, about where to go on fixing this bridge, because it is expensive, and we don't necessarily need to go to the Cadillac. We could probably go in the middle and address the concerns and have a nice bridge that will last seventy-five years and be awesome.
Love it. You hit all the notes on that.
This is one we got to pay for, right?
Yes.
It's not long enough to, uh.
Right, if we just ignore it and wait for it to take over, it's like four hundred seventy-five minutes. Not near radar, but it's one of the most efficient bridges in town.
And I remember you, you've been very proactive, and I remember a report, maybe a couple months ago, on this bridge. They had a bunch of pictures underneath the bridge, so what I.
The inspection report.
Exactly. What I do want to say on the record is I want to thank everybody for being proactive and not waiting until we're in a crisis mode for these things, and I think that you've given a good example to everybody that it's good to be proactive, and we appreciate it.
This bid is for engineering survey?
Correct.
And the total is?
Right, for future, well, they're giving us a type plan here to tell us what to do, and then we would pick from our options of what we wanted to do.
Is the figure thirty-nine thousand?
Thirty-five.
Where is that?
Well, I asked them to go to thirty-five, so I have it in an email, and he was supposed to send over a revised one. It's probably my mistake, I just never sent it to Carrie.
So if we take a vote, it should be for?
Thirty-five even.
Even, okay.
That money was appropriated at the last annual.
Right. Which is why I asked them to shave some off there.
We only have thirty-five thousand.
I didn't tell them that. I said, "Would you mind going to thirty-five?" And he said, "Yes."
This is the only proposal we're dealing with, right?
Right, we didn't go out to bid for this one. Engineering services are actually exempt from thirty B. It is always a good idea, and we did with the grant, because it's grant money. But with this, Weston and Sampson's a trusted professional.
And we're using them for the environmental study, I believe, as well, correct?
For, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm entertaining motions if we have no more questions.
Okay, I'm not going to make a motion on this, because I serve on the same committee as a VP from Weston and Sampson, so I'm going to abstain from the vote, so I can make the motion.
So we're only asking that the, they do the engineering work, then?
The type plan, yes.
And site plan?
Type, type.
Type?
Like, type.
Type?
Type.
But type rule.
I'll make a motion that Weston and Sampson be awarded the contract for the engineering and type plan.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, for Muddy Cove Pleasant Street Bridge. Any amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
The motion passes, and thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Ferry, but we're not done yet.
We're not done.
And I believe next on the agenda regarding Mr. Ferry is the discussion of snowplow rates for the 2018-2019 season. Mr. Ferry, you have the floor, sir.
Where is that one?
That is right.
Item K.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take, has he got more than one?
K and L.
K and L. Mr. Chairman, I move that we take out of order next, agenda items K and L.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Mr. Ferry's on a roll, too, huh?
He is. Mr. Ferry, if you want, if you don't want to talk, I can read this. I understand.
I, I can lead up fairly quickly.
Thank you, sir.
And probably answer some questions you may have asked. So from time to time, we review our prices, consolidate with local towns. This year, we have the luxury of, since we've joined Surges, that's done automatically a month prior to tonight. We do it uniformly, and these are vast array of prices. A lot of prices, we are quite the lowest, and some of them, we're kind of in the middle. And I think being in the middle is a good place to be, so we're not stealing people or we're losing people. So I do like to raise it. It's been a couple of years for ourselves, so with that all said, these prices, and I believe Mrs. Aristine agrees with these prices.
I do.
Okay, so the pickup under, under one ton, seventy dollars an hour. Trucks, one ton through twenty-six thousand pounds, whether it's a pickup or the six-wheeled small dumps, and a nine-foot plow, eighty dollars an hour. Over the twenty-six thousand pounds, and a ten-foot plow, eighty-five dollars an hour. And the loaders with a three-foot bucket, a hundred and ten an hour. That, that loader price, we have not touched, and we don't usually hire that, but we're talking like seventy-eight or bigger, so.
I don't actually have any questions on this. It's pretty straightforward. Either of my colleagues, or, and Town Administrator Arronstein?
I have no questions.
All right, I'm accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rates for snow removal for contracted vehicles. Pickup truck, pickups under one ton, seventy dollars an hour. Trucks, one ton, but under twenty-six thousand pounds, with at least a nine-foot plow, eighty dollars an hour. Trucks, over twenty-six thousand pounds, with at least a ten-foot plow, eighty-five dollars an hour. And loaders with a three-yard bucket, a hundred and ten dollars per hour is recommended.
Just for clarification, is this only for this fiscal winter, then? So.
Yes.
Or, or until we change it?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. And I guess you would fill this part out, correct, Mr. Ferry?
Uh, I believe what you're holding is a contract I use. I have them sign it, so they agree on the price, and we know exactly what the vehicle is, and part of the policy is on the first page, so they fully understand.
Perfect.
What we expected them.
So I'm off the hook. I don't have to sign anything. Okay, I like that. No, just kidding, Mr. Ferry.
Unless you own a plow or a truck.
No, definitely not. Does a Honda Civic count? We can go to put them, yes.
Need like a little light that would stick to the top.
Honda Civic comes in front of the Ford.
And.
It's got a shovel in the trunk.
I actually don't. So embarrassing. And next, while you're still here, or, we're doing L next, correct?
Correct.
Discussion of Highway Department Part-Time Laborer Rate. Discussion of Highway Department part-time laborer rate.
I, sort of strong-armed Tom in putting this on here, I just wanted you to view the rate and see if you wanted to raise it. So at a previous meeting, you did authorize us to go out and find some temporary part-time help, under twenty hours. And when I saw the rate, I found it to be a little low, so I'm here asking if you agree. If you don't agree, that's just fine. Um, but we do need to know what that pay rate will be.
So my two questions would be, what's, what was the proposed rate and what, what do you ballpark think it should be?
How it is right now, it's fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents an hour.
Oh.
I think it should be-
Um, may I?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I, I think that's terribly low. Um, I work in the healthcare or, or benefits, human resources, um, industry and, yeah. I think for that type of work, I think we should raise it. And I, I don't know a figure, did you-
Can't go higher than, I think, twenty-two.
Yeah, the police part-timers and, uh, fire, fire and amulets, part-time or on-call, I think are slightly higher than, um, believing that figure that you came up with, right?
What was my figure that I came up with?
I, I don't know, I don't have it.
In my mind, it's like eighteen, nineteen, twenty, somewhere in there. I mean, we can, I wouldn't necessarily relate them to a call firefighter just because there's a handful of certifications that that person would have to have. Um, but I'm, I'm thinking to be more competitive, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, whatever you feel comfortable with, Tom. I know we're working on a budget mid-year, so I don't wanna spend it for you.
And I'm okay with that because that type of, um, physical labor, you know, I have a desk job, so I, to have, to have that be so low and then you have someone like physically out there in the elements, it just seems very low to me.
They're not entitled to a clothing allowance.
Correct.
So they're gonna be ruining their own clothes and boots. They don't get the boot allowance. So it's just things like that that I wanna compensate for. You're smiling and I don't know, am I saying something wrong?
When am I not smiling? Um, so are you proposing a rate? Are you bringing it to their attention?
I'm bringing it to their attention.
Okay.
I, I was okay with, with all of those.
Are you suggesting that you should get paid less because you were gonna test that?
I'm suggesting this-
I can accept that motion.
What, doesn't have a shovel in its?
No, definitely not.
What is, uh, the rates in the area that other towns have had?
I, I wasn't prepared for that tonight. Um, I'm looking ahead and, and I'm thinking, she's bringing it to your attention. I think we may be better off tableing it and address it next meeting.
When we have maybe a couple of figures?
Okay, so I just, I, this is here just really for discussion. I wanted to make sure I wasn't alone and thinking that fourteen was low.
No.
So I can do a survey. However, other towns might not do this, so I just, it might be slim pickings.
I understand, but I don't think that we're losing, it's not a big deal to have it. We're meeting next week and-
Oh, no, I know, I just-
And I think, and let me ask my colleagues, um, do you agree that the, and again, we don't have a figure that we've settled on, but do you agree that fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents an hour is a, a low figure for that type of work?
I would-
With the expectations that come with that position?
I would say it's low, but I wanna see-
And we don't have to settle on the figure, that's fine.
I, I would say it's low, so.
It's not even six hundred dollars a week.
That, that was my concern.
Those boots are at least two fifty, right? A good pair of work boots?
Yes.
So I don't, I just don't think that that's right.
I agree, we're all in agreement.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we table this, uh, agenda item until, until next week or, uh, until the two, uh, Town Administrator has a chance to get some comparative information.
I'll second that motion, but you think you can have it next week? Yes, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be meeting after that for three weeks.
Yeah, until the end of October.
So, I just, we should try to resolve this as soon as possible.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the motion passes. That's tabled until next week. And I think that's it. Mr. Ferry, you get to go home and have dinner. And I thank you for your patience always. Absolutely. And we'll go back to seven A, old business. Uh, proclamation in honor of the Town of Rehoboth, three-hundred-seventy-fifth anniversary. While we're here, before we discuss this, I did wanna advise my colleagues, uh, Mrs. Brady had sent us an email. I did tell the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, I believe Selectmen Goulart did as well, that we were happy to walk, um, in their parade. Um, so I just wanted you to be aware, if you hadn't seen the email.
Yeah, no, I have, and I did respond. I believe I did respond to Karen.
Yes.
Uh, I'm, uh, marching with the Rehoboth Minutemen.
Oh, that's great.
So, I'm, I'd love to walk with you guys, but, uh, I wanna be with the Minutemen. I've been with them-
You'd rather be with the Minutemen, I understand.
I've been with them for twenty-five years and-
If the weather is good, I suggested that we carry them.
Happily.
You too.
Yes, sure.
I'll carry my musket, you carry-
With the weather good, well, you can have it, gun if it's pouring rain, but if, if it's not dry, we're not taking that.
Yeah, no, no, no.
There's only two.
Yeah.
The ones at the State House, and that's the other one.
Yeah, I believe the parade is about a mile and a half, so you think you can carry that?
I don't even, I'm not even sure I can carry my own body weight for a mile and a half, so, but we'll make it work.
Get that, what is it, Honda?
I'll ride the Honda.
Um, on this item, I know that Selectmen Goulart had some changes. You've already actually authorized to do this. It was here for signatures, but if you're okay with her changes and then we can just, you don't even need to be.
We need to tell you some clarification of the dates and stuff. I got part of it today, I didn't get the rest of it from the town clerk. And I, I showed, uh, Mrs. Aristen what I had gotten in the documentation. So I'm gonna call over there tomorrow and find out. What I really need is the actual date, because they actually have a charter unlike us. Uh, and she told me there were fifty-some people who signed it, so we don't wanna know those names. But the date, maybe it's like the John Hancock thing, you know, with all the names. But I think once we get that date, that's the date we wanna cite.
Mm-hmm.
Not the date we're gonna present it, but the actual date that they became, uh-
So are you proposing to wait?
No, I think what we can do is prepare for it and leave it on your desk to sign.
Okay.
You don't even need to vote. This was just for you to sign.
We already approved doing it and they said that we'll come up with a, a proper proclamation. So we're just fine tuning the wording.
Okay.
And then Karen will have it and, um, we'll be here for signature and soon we'll put the, the gold seal or whatever it is she's gonna do.
Alright, sounds good to me.
So this is just a progress report, where we are.
Fine with that. Any comments before we move on? Okay.
Okay with that.
Madam Administrator? Alright, um, so now is that exciting time in the evening where we get to do the second reading uh, of the performance evaluation and procedure policy. And-
This does incorporate the changes that we discussed last meeting?
Are you sure you don't want me to do it?
Uh-huh, oh, I'll read it, I'll read it. Um, performance evaluation policy and procedure, we have an effective date of January first, two thousand and nineteen, because that's when we anticipate we'll start doing these, um, evaluations. The town, background, the Town of Dayton seeks to professionalize its municipal operations and as such is introducing a performance evaluation policy and procedure. The employee is expected to provide input for discussion and the evaluator is expected to respond to the employee's input as well as to provide feedback on the employee's performance. Purpose and applicability. Performance evaluations are intended to provide a formal opportunity for two-way communication between the employee and the Board of Selectmen or its designee, here and after referred to as evaluator, to enhance the professionalism and performance of employees. Performance evaluations provide information for the continuous improvement of performance and also aid in uniting all departments to work toward common goals and plans. This policy shall apply to all employees under the appointment and supervision of the Board of Selectmen. Union personnel and elected officials shall not be subject to this policy. And that's only because we have to negotiate that with union, um, personnel, just, just so everyone knows. Evaluation shall take place in the month of January each year with a mid-year review if requested. Process, number one, the evaluator will secure a copy of the employee's job description. Just as an update, this is in process, we've asked everybody for their job descriptions. I have, um, a, a select handful. The employee will submit a self-evaluation to the evaluator using the performance evaluation form that is attached to this policy. The employee should make note of any topics that he or she would like to address in the discussion with the evaluator. The employee should also list any accomplishments or achievements of goals that have or have not been completed. After reviewing the employee's self-assessment, the evaluator will provide a written evaluation and comments on the performance evaluation form. The performance evaluation form will indicate the employee's progress in achieving the designated goals. Each goal will be addressed individually by the evaluator and specific comments, commendations, concerns, and/or recommendations for improvement shall be included, shall also be included. The self-assessment shall be attached to the evaluator's evaluation. Together, these will constitute the complete evaluation. Number three, the evaluator and the employee will have a meeting to discuss the review, any topics of concern or special importance to either party and to communicate about performance during the review period. Included in this meeting, the two parties will agree on a set of four goals to be accomplished during the next review period. After the meeting, the employee will have the opportunity to respond in writing to any comments or ratings in the performance evaluation if desired. Any written response shall be affixed to the evaluation. The employee and evaluator both will sign the performance evaluation form. The original copy shall be kept in the employee's personnel file and the employee and supervisor shall each be given a copy. Mid-year review, number one, there may be a mid-year review at the option of either the evaluator or the employee if either party has concerns about the attainment of the goals to date by the employee or any other concerns about the employee's performance. The employee may also request a mid-year review if he or she has concerns to discuss with the evaluator. The evaluator shall endeavor at all times to notify an employee, either orally or in writing, whenever the evaluator feels that a member's performance is not meeting professional standards or expectations. The purpose of this provision is to provide employees with as much advance notice as possible of concerns that the board or the town administrator may have regarding the employee's job performance and to provide the opportunity to resolve such concerns. During the mid-year review, the evaluator and the employee shall identify specific areas of concern, state the reasons for his or her concern and outline recommendations to address those concerns which shall be set forth in writing. In the event that employee disagrees with any of the concerns or recommendations of the evaluator, the employee shall have the right to respond in writing. Also during the mid-year review, the employee shall be afforded the opportunity to update or tweak any goals agreed to, should circumstances change surrounding that particular goal. The evaluator must agree to said changes. Nothing in this section shall preclude the evaluator from identifying areas of improvement or concern in the annual review. Sorry, I may, I wanted to go back to that. I may have a problem with the, with the goals. Uh, number one, there shall be four goals listed in the performance evaluation form. Two goals shall be proposed by the employee and two goals shall be proposed by the evaluator. Goals shall be smart, meaning specific, which is clear and unambiguous, measurable, which is results must be measurable in some way. Attainable must be realistic and attainable by the average employee. Relevant must relate to the department's overall mission as well as that of the town. And time-bound must have a definite starting and ending point. Additionally, goals should not be dependent upon too many outside factors that cannot reasonably be controlled by the employee. And then there's the signature page and then the performance evaluation form as well, both of which are updated on, uploaded on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already agreed on the form, right?
Yes.
We did.
Yep.
Although if any, it's still under draft, so if any-
Yeah, if you, if you have concerns, yeah, we still have, what, a week?
A week, right, the third will be the third-
We'll vote.
The October third meeting will be the third reading and the vote.
Perfect.
I'm just concerned about the evaluator must agree to said changes. What if the changes are like, not based on any real, like, what if the employee happens, I, I feel bad saying this, but like, make up a reason as to why they need to change their goals and then this says the evaluator must agree to said changes?
Where's, where-
Uh, I'm sorry, this is under the mid-year review in item three. I just have a problem with that, that sentence.
But why?
Because what if somebody comes to me and says, "I don't like this goal anymore, I just don't like doing it." And then I must agree, if it's me, I must agree to the said changes or you must agree as the Board of Selectmen to the said changes.
Normal to me, though.
If you just don't like the goal?
Well, if there's not a real reason-
What if it was one of the goals that we set out?
But I, you wouldn't give me like a falsified reason and, and you would never say that.
I wouldn't, but twenty years from now, when of course this wonderful policy is still in place, where, you know, what if, you know? I just, when it says, somebody must agree, that's worrisome to me, just because it commits you to something that's unknown.
Well, should, should it be that the evaluator and the employee will discuss?
Yes, I think.
Any, uh, proposed changes to reach a solution? Um, and, and this was one of the things we talked about, if in fact a mid-year is-
Right.
Chosen, because if something happens, if you're working, you're really focused on what you're doing on a certain goal, all of a sudden, something totally unexpected happens.
I guess I want it to be for a good reason.
Yes.
But I feel like you're interpreting it differently than I am. I feel like how you're both interpret, which is fine, 'cause it does read like that, is that the evaluator has to agree with said changes. I'm interpreting it as the changes don't go into effect unless the evaluator agrees to those changes. Am I reading it incorrectly?
So can we say it like that?
Did you not read it like that?
I guess I wanna-
I get how you're reading it and I, and when she said that, it went off in my head.
But I understand what you're saying, that whole thing is being put on the evaluator to make the decision. And if the employee truly, truly believes, and it may be possible that they can't explain exactly what it is. That's why I'm thinking if the, if it's, if a change is proposed when it's mid-year and this, this is being discussed and somebody, the evaluator or the, let's assume the evaluator says, "How are you doing with the such and such?" And the employee says, "This is not gonna work." Then the two parties would get together and talk about it and come up with a resolution. It not, the, the entire thing may, the goal may not change entirely, but through discussion, it might be modified so that it can be attained and the evaluator is happy with the way it's gonna go.
Right, so if, should, option one, remove, the evaluator must agree to said changes and then be done. Option two, remove that and tweak it so that it says something like both parties must agree.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but even that, I'm a little-
Or that the changes can't go into effect unless the evaluator agrees?
I mean, you're gonna have to be like, you're gonna have to sign it, right? Like they would, you'd have to update the evaluation and, and write what the goals are because you're using that document at a later date to judge somebody on their performance. So I feel that the best thing might be just to be silent on it at this juncture and then as we go through the process, we can, uh-
And just strike the centers.
The evaluator must agree.
I don't have a problem with that, 'cause, again, if, if, someone's gonna have to request this. This isn't gonna happen automatically.
Exactly.
If they request it, the employee may be looking for help. They're looking for some direction and they really wanna talk about this. And, um, by the same token, if the evaluator is observing and realizes this is not going the way it should, there's gonna be talking about this, alright? Update and tweak any goals. I think that kinda handles it. You're gonna come up with a resolution.
Yep.
So we're just gonna, alright, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you for-
No, no, that's a good point. It's funny how you can read one thing in two different ways.
Well, this is why I like the reading of them, because it makes me, like, I, you know, I write it, so I have to step away and it makes me think about it.
The other thing too, we're gonna be dealing with people that may have never had a professional evaluation. And if they look at that, that might get a little scary, 'cause what am I gonna do if the evaluator says, "No way, it's not gonna change."
Right.
And the person is really having a difficult time.
Then they might not wanna ever, if that's how they feel, they might not feel comfortable at that point.
And then it becomes like a self-centers, censorship thing and then they-
Exactly, which we don't want. We want communication, that's the whole point of this.
The whole point is to open up communication.
Performance and to help, that's what it is, okay.
Absolutely. Professional development, no, I agree, good catch.
So for my own clarification on this, uh, I didn't participate in the last evaluation. This also applies to you.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And are we, I don't know what the process is. Do we, each board member meet with you individually?
I don't know what you're gonna do. Um, that would be up to you.
We did three, we, Selectmen Goulart and I last time had like separate evaluations and she did hers often, I did mine.
Same form, but didn't-
But you sat down with them?
Together, eventually, yeah, the two of us.
No, in a meeting, it was, so, performance evaluations-
We gave it to her ahead of, a day ahead of time.
Yep, and then discussed it at the meeting.
Performance evaluations must be conducted in open session. So they, it's also been ruled that a performance evaluation is a matter of opinion and so it cannot be shared amongst board members before. So really, the only way I find that's practicable is that everybody does their own evaluation. Like, I would do my self-evaluation and give it all to you. And then you would do your evaluation. I would then, if it was our, and I asked permission to do this, I asked for their evaluations ahead of time, so I could read them and respond, uh, which I did. And then we did it in a open meeting. We, they, they conducted the evaluation. They went over theirs, respect, you know, each one, and then, um, went down why they rated me that way.
I, I did, I do remember seeing that on, uh, in fact, I was actually here, uh, at that meeting. So my question is then, it says that there's gonna be four goals. You come up with two, for example. I come up with two, Brett comes up with two, Nancy comes up with two.
And then you vote to- And then you vote together as two.
So both our goals are different then?
So how they did it last time was, um, Brett came out with three, I think, cause I think I wrote what my goals were. I actually can't remember now. But Brett came out with a handful, Nancy had a couple.
I didn't have many.
And we worked them out at the meeting, what they were going to be, and we settled on three. And actually, developing this policy was talked about being one, it's not actually one, but was talked about being one, but we're, we're getting it done. Um, so we, as part of that meeting, hashed out what the goals are going to be.
It's a very organic process.
Yes, when this, um, when this, when this, um, professional evaluation process was discussed and we was seeking forms, which is behind us now, um, the, the other thing will be, now that we have the instrument and we will have a policy shortly, another week, um, then in advance of us actually getting it, as she said, she will do her self-evaluation and photo it and we will get a copy of that and we will use, that is the worksheet and she will get it back. We will each give her a copy back before it gets discussed.
With our own evaluation.
Exactly.
You'll be doing an evaluation. So same form, but you use, you know, you do it.
Yep.
Um, and then.
Give it to you like a day or two in advance.
Well, that helps me out, so I will always request that.
Yeah, of course. It's a courtesy.
And then, but the three of you cannot see what the others.
No, we can't.
No, I, I agree with that a hundred percent.
And the rest of it is that the reason we developed the, this policy and the actual form, excuse me, is because during budget discussions, the finance committee questioned why we had, um, uh, we said we were going to support raises for individuals that were higher than 2%.
Mm-hmm.
And we said strictly merit this time. And they said, "No, we want an evaluation." And what we said was, "No, in these two particular cases, we are taking it to town meeting." But yes, we are going to develop exactly what you want, so other employees are going to be doing this.
Sure.
Okay?
So we're not limited to four goals then?
For you to develop your own.
I think that's in the contract.
My contract says four goals.
Yeah.
We only agreed to three and I remember saying it says four and you were like, "Don't worry about it." So it's written into my contract as four. The four, I just did to be consistent, if you don't like that.
No, that's, no, that's fine.
And, and to be honest, that evaluation policy would technically be the fourth, cause we did, that was a goal of, not just you, but for us, you know, and as a town too. I'm sorry.
So when you say you're not limited to four, I don't, I think what, I think what I'm hearing is that you want to be able to develop goals.
So, and we're doing it individually, so we're going to come up with, we're probably going to come up with separate goals.
Yeah.
Right, and then.
But then we're going to hash it out at a public meeting and come down with four goals.
And who knows, maybe my goals will be the same.
Mm-hmm.
We had one that was sort of similar between the two of you.
Yeah. And that's how we ended up at three, I remember now. Um, what I'm also thinking, and again, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, cause we'll hash this out, um, as we approach that time where we're just going to do your evaluation. Um, I'm almost thinking the fair thing would be, um, like maybe if we, we all have our own list, you'll have your own list and then everybody just picks one.
Right.
Like your top one.
Absolutely.
That could, if there's no overlap.
So three from you, one of each and.
One of yours.
And I think that's.
Okay. And again, we're not committing to that. We'll, we'll discuss, I'm just thinking what would be fair is everybody gets their input, you get yours, the three of us get ours and I think everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that this says that you get proposed two.
So I'm always going to come with more than two, cause that's just my way.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I don't know if that's good, but you know, I always like a, if you don't like this one, we can do this one.
Exactly.
Um, so I'll always come with more than, than two.
Absolutely.
The hope, I think the hope is that we're all kind of on the same page and want to project to propel the same place.
And I'll repeat the comment I said the last time with this, that the midyear review shouldn't happen that often. I see that to be rare. If the employees request it, obviously we should have it, or the evaluator, but I don't see that happening too often for.
And I, just to get this on the record so that there's intent, this does not mean save up all your comments for the performance evaluation, um, like when we eventually roll this out to everybody, every, you should be telling people what your expectations are all along. Um, if you really have a problem with something, you shouldn't sit on it, like you need to just say and give the person an opportunity to reach whatever that standard is, cause more often than not, they just don't know. Um, so the, I think, and how I'm saying this, because I feel that we will use this to, to model it, to bring it to the unions when that does happen. So I just want that out there, that, that's the intent, that it's not just going to be, "Hey, on this day, I'm going to tell you all the horrible things you did last year."
And the other side of the street is, an employee trying to work through this that has never gone through an evaluation process should feel free to speak to the person who's going to evaluate them and say, I, whether, and they may not request the, uh, the midyear thing, but they say, "I really want to sit down and talk to you about this particular thing."
Right.
And if they have any trouble and say, "I need help, I don't know how to really handle this," that's, cause that's what we're trying to encourage.
I agree.
Professional development. I think that should be important to everybody. Yep. All right. Uh, if there's no further discussion on that, moving on to new business, placing articles on the warrant for special town meeting. Madam Administrator?
Okay, I'm sorry, my packet is a little bit out of order.
It's okay, we did, we had a lot. We had a lot of out of orders tonight.
Well, we've got, oh, it's right here, we've got warrant articles. So we're having a special town meeting on October 15th. We hope you'll join us, 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. Um, we have some prior year bills, which I'm kind of sad about, so hopefully this is one of the last times we'll be coming to the town about prior year bills. Um, so that's article two. Article one is to hear reports. Article two is prior year bills. Article three is, um, this is on here based on my conversations with the finance committee. Now, they have not met and they will meet after you put this warrant together, um, but we were talking about placing, taking money from free cash and making the first payment for the police station, which is $414,000 and taking that off the tax rolls. There are some other requests, so I don't know where he's going to land on that. I, he didn't really like this, but I threw out just making the principal payment through free cash and having the town, it's already in the budget, having the town do the interest for this year, but obviously that's for them to talk about, so that's on there as a sum not to exceed. Um, the next one is $145,000 to, um, fund the police union contract. I know that sounds like a very large number. Most of that is overtime.
That may not be used.
Correct. And most of it's overtime. Uh, we do have an officer out, so our overtime line is being expended. Um, to see if the town will vote to raise, so, um, the Dayton Fire Station, the number two, needs an exhaust system. Uh, if you ever spend any time in there, you can smell why.
Yeah.
Uh, but that is a plimo vent, it's called, and it's $40,000, so he's requesting that. Um, the assessors have two articles, one is, they're both for appraisals, one is for $10,000, one is for $22,000, I'm not, I'm sorry, evalu-, um, valuations, not appraisals. $10,000 and $22,000. The police department's requesting $9,000 for a grant. Um, they need to spend the money and then they get the grant back and these are for bulletproof vests, so it's in anticipation of a grant reimbursement. The, um, animal shelter, so as you may be aware, the state has provide, I know you are aware, but for the public, the state's provided us $25,000 to go towards an animal shelter facility. Um, talking with animal control officer Ferry and looking at the building we have, you might not want to do this. I put, I put it on here to be safe. I just threw in a, a sum of money, um, to complement the $25,000 to actually outfit that building and renovate it and pull out kind of the old paneling.
So we really don't know how much it's going to be?
Well, I spoke with the building inspector and he thought that this would be plenty of money, but I did go in there and, um, I mean, if I were putting a new facility in that building, I would do a, I, I would do a good job. I would renovate it.
Of course.
However, there are some not expensive options about, like rubber flooring, that's easy to clean, you would need it because it's animals. Um, I just think, to your comment of, "I don't want to have to go back to the people," I agree. So that's, it's $50,000, it's high. You don't have to do it.
No, 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 my issue isn't the figure. Did the building inspector go to the police station and take a look around? Like is this based on a whim? Because we've had figures thrown out before and they weren't high enough and it delayed the project and we had to come back and we needed another town meeting vote. And it's like a circle of awfulness that we don't want to repeat.
It is a circle of awfulness.
So I guess my question is, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but there's nobody else here. Is this an educated?
Put on the spot.
But I am putting you on the spot, but only because you were in those discussions.
Yeah, I understand.
And I know what you're going to say, so in anticipation of that, right? No, I already know. Um, is this an educated figure or is it a guess?
It's a guess. Educated, like.
I just don't think that's going to fly at town meeting.
It's my, it's my guess and my conversation.
A guess is not going to pass.
Right, and it's my conversation with him about the state of that building, about removing the trailers and closing off the building and giving it the deep, clean gut that it deserves, because I don't think it's right to shove an animal control officer into a building that, no offense to anybody, I'm sorry, but that has been pretty much neglected for a little while.
I understand.
Um, I did go into the dispatch area and like the, the floor panels are, like the tiles are all broken, there's like, it's just not where I think we should put any other department without doing an adequate job. But I.
To that end is, I think with a figure that's a guess, we're not going to have to worry about that, because the animal control officer isn't going to get to go there, cause nobody's going to approve it. Like, does anybody, am I, echo chamber of just myself?
No, and I understand what you're saying. I, so he returned from vacation on Monday. I was, I'm out of the office this week for school, so I was here on Monday, we met on Monday, we had a laundry list of items to talk about, this was one of them. Do I know if he went over after the fact and looked at it? No, but I'm pretty sure he didn't. I mean, if I had to guess, no.
Cause he's, I understand.
But knowing, like, we don't have on paper exactly what Stacy's even looking for. I have an idea, but I don't know if she's rolling out the quarantine room first or the ability for kids to come over and read first or second, I don't know what her thoughts are. Is there more money where this came from? I don't really know. I feel like we're very conceptual right here, so this is actually the best that we can do. And I understand your concerns, I'm not trying to shark them off, I get it, but I don't know how else to help Stacy in the confines that we have, you know?
Are you thinking the number of 50,000 should be higher?
I just think it should be based on an actual assessment, that's all. Like I'm not, I don't even know if that's too high, cause remember we're getting the $25,000 from the grant.
Okay, but what I'm saying, the reason I'm asking you that is if this should go to 75 and we got 25, we're at $100,000. We can always reduce on town meeting floor, but we can't increase.
Do you think we'd have a more?
I think 75,000 is completely appropriate.
So 75 in the article plus the 25 from the grant, right?
Oh, you think total?
I think, I put in 50, cause I think that that's plenty and she doesn't need ever, anything's an upgrade from what we've got, right? Because it's got climate control, so that's a good thing. But to adequately rip up what's there, I think you would need this.
My thought is, to address the concerns that you have and not, not to come back. If we go with the 25 in there and put 75 here, I think it's more than adequate. And by then, we will have numbers at town meeting and we can cut it right then and there. That's.
I see.
And I'm okay with that.
Because we got to do this warrant, that's the only reason I'm saying that.
I understand.
Is.
Does that address your concerns?
I'm not comfortable with that, because I was hoping that we would have, and it's not your fault, Mallory.
Yeah.
But I was hoping that we'd have better figures.
More accurate.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, we're talking $50,000. I mean, even if you're buying a big truck, they have $49,995, it's not 50, I mean, 50,000 is just such a round figure. I, it's not something that I feel comfortable asking townspeople to, I have no idea how much it's going to, it may cost more than this. I want to be able to go before the town and say, "This is what it's going to cost," cause it could be a money pit over there. And I don't want to start spending this 50,000 and go back in January, it's another 25 or $30,000.
I understand.
But whatever number we put here, that's what my point is.
Right, cause you can't go.
If we, whether we go with 50,000 or 75, uh, the additional money, we should have good numbers going into town meeting. And you know what? If we find out it's more than 100,000, we just table this thing right there and don't do anything and look for the next town meeting.
So I think what I'm getting is, do we agree that 25,000 is not enough? Question number one. Cause if we don't, if we think 25,000 is enough, there's no sense of bringing this to town meetings, we already have that.
No, 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 25,000 is absolutely not enough.
So we do agree that we would need to go to the town.
We know that much.
So now we need to figure out what the cost is. I mean, maybe another 25 for a total of 50 could actually get us somewhere and then with the expectation that we might go back. I was just really concerned with the comment that you made, "I don't want to have to go back." And I understand that totally. And I understand not having.
I think I made that comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I totally understand.
I did agree.
Yes, no, I, yeah, I don't want to take any thing away from you, but I, I don't want to go back to the townspeople and ask for more money for this. So I, I want accurate figures. Uh, I'd want to see what the finance committee feels about this also. I mean, what, do we know when they're going to meet on this, on all these proposals?
Well, it has to be after we set the warrant, cause they need to know what's on.
Are we signing this warrant tonight?
Correct, it has to be posted on the first.
Okay, so, and so this is another reason, if we have a higher number in here for, and it's a placeholder, as I say, when we go to town meeting, we will have firm numbers. And if we don't have firm numbers and we're not com- comfortable with the numbers we got, we move to table it, which means it, nothing's going to happen.
Where are we getting the firm numbers from then? Where are we going to get those firm numbers?
We have to ask somebody to come out and tell us, "How much is it to gut?" I mean, talking to Jim, he thinks a significant amount would be demo. I agree. I agree wholeheartedly. Um, there is a, I don't know if you've been in there, but there's like a steep, so in the door, like not in the little lobby area, there's this steep incline.
Yeah.
And that would have to be completely blocked, even though the, um, the floor is raised, so that's good. We need a raised floor. And we have to close a wall. I mean, I don't know, we can do some of this in-house, but I don't know how much. But he seems, it's demo, demo is relatively cheap, just because you're just knocking stuff down.
I will say, I, I agree with Selectman Pacheco that we can't come back for more money. But what I also said that night is, I do think we should overshoot the price. And if it, if it doesn't end up being that much, assuming that we wouldn't need anymore, I'm okay with that. So I'm actually, I agree with you, but I also see your point of ask for more. And then by the time town meeting comes around, we'll have a more accurate figure, I believe this is what you're saying.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, even if we come up with a number based on the, all the numbers estimates, whatever we get, and the people say, okay, you've got it, it goes into a special account, and if we don't spend it all, it closes out. So it's not like it's gonna be spent on, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be spent for the sake of being spent. But if we go in with a number and find out, because we, and this is all because we gotta do this warrant tonight. And the finance committee understands, when we meet with them, that we're still working to get this number down. Quite frankly, like we do with the school budget, we go in with a higher number and wait for rehab, town meeting and state aid and all that good stuff. And quite often, we come in with, we reduce it on town meeting floor, you know, it just gives us flexibility for signing.
And I know that, I've asked Jim to meet with Stacy, to get a concrete idea of what, what she's looking for. So, I mean, I don't really know if she's thinking of, because everything's in kennels, so there's not too much building that needs to be done. My concern is really like taking everything out and then, you know, when you take something, it's like an onion, when you take stuff out, you're gonna see all the layers. So what's in the layer? We don't know. Well, I don't know what's in the layer. I thought fifty thousand was a good number, though, so I'm not sure. Seventy-five, I think that's plenty, to be honest. It's not that large of a space.
It isn't that large of a space.
I just think we have to be careful. We're going back before the town and asking them to spend over a million dollars at the town meeting, which is more than five percent of our budget, I believe, uh, increase of five percent. And seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is raised and appropriated. So it's not like it's free cash, so-called free cash. So I think we have to be careful. A lot of these items, I agree with, that, that are on here, I just don't, does it say all raised and appropriated?
No, it's not all.
So, my personal goal, I don't know if I'll attain this, is to only spell, spend free cash. I don't think we should put any of this on the taxpayer.
And I'm okay with that.
So, the only thing that kinda stinks for us is a lot of our free cash has already been allocated. So when normally, that might not have been the case. But that's my personal goal. I think capital items should always, we should always strive to pay with, with free cash if we can. I would like to not raise and appropriate.
I will make a caveat, though, and you, I feel like you know what I'm gonna say. Free cash isn't really free, though. It's already been raised and appropriated and we, so I could go on a long rant about why we have two million dollars in free cash every single year since I've been here, but we.
You won't anymore, though.
But, but free cash is a combination, it's a litany of things. In free cash is all the money that's brought in through permits and that, so it's not all raised and appropriate. The other thing I will mention is, the, as far as the FinCom goes, for example, a hundred forty-five, you don't increase payroll with free cash, that's gonna be an R and A. So if it's a payroll item, that's, I'm, they have never changed that.
And again, we know, they haven't met yet, so we don't know.
Increase, you're buying a cruiser, or buying a whatever, a one-time thing, a free cash thing is fine.
Exactly why the audit, if you'll remember, an annual town meeting was, went to raise and appropriate, because we're now going to move that into the budget, um, and basically, we're like, let's get used to it now. So, I think also, we didn't know, not to harp on the animal control facility, but we didn't know this money was coming necessarily. So we got this notice fairly late, like, I, I, we're kinda, I don't wanna paint the town in a bad light, like, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but not really of any doing of ourselves.
No, no, and it's not just the town, we got a letter that stated that we got twenty-five thousand, and this all happened recently.
Have to spend it by June thirtieth. And in order to spend it, we need to develop, in order to get it, we need to develop a scope of work, but in order to develop a scope of work, we need to know how much we have. So it's, um, a little bit of a dance over here.
So, what I will say, because it's nine thirty and we have a lot to do tonight, I don't know if we wanna increase this number. I'm gonna support this number as is, contingent upon, um, getting, yeah, some, some actual data, um, and contingent upon what FinCom input they have. The reason is because at the end of the day, if we don't get this done, we are gonna forfeit that twenty-five thousand, and I know it's not a million dollars, but it's something, and it's, it's less that we have to come up with.
Right, exactly.
So for now, I'm okay with it. But I'm hoping they flesh that out, because I, I will, if we don't get that fleshed out, if we don't get more specifics, I will support a tabling of it if somebody in the audience does want to. Um, but I do, we need to keep this on here, in my opinion, um, and we need to not lose that twenty-five thousand dollars. That was, literally fell out of the sky from B and L.
In order to get the twenty-five, let's, worst-case scenario, we got twenty-five in grant money and we got fifty in the budget, we need eighty grand. If we do, if we spend the twenty-five grand and the fifty that was budgeted, but we still need more money, would us, would we be jeopardizing the twenty-five thousand dollar grant if we said, you know what, next year, we're gonna replace the windows? That's not the program for this year, we're gonna, for the money we got, the fifty thousand and the twenty-five, this is what we're gonna do for the building. Now, next year, we're gonna ask for money for, um, new windows and energy efficient something or other. But as long as we do something in the year, the twenty-five, we're not gonna lose it.
I haven't seen the contract, but what I think is, you get twenty-five thousand dollars, you tell the state what you're gonna do with it, and you do it, and then you show them, then that's done. And then you've fulfilled your contractual obligation with them, and you're all set.
And there's a chance we might get some more money next year.
I think so, because what's the message if we return it?
We will, because as you remember, we discussed this last year. So Senator Pacheco has been attempting to get this in the budget for like several years, and I suspect um, that he would keep doing it, because it happened last year.
I just don't wanna jeopardize that grant.
I'm not suggesting that we return the money, twenty-five thousand dollars is very helpful. I just think we need to have a, an accurate figure that we're gonna present to the townspeople, and I, I'm concerned about a fifty thousand, maybe seventy-five thousand, maybe forty thousand. I'm just concerned about the figure. And I'm not sure we're gonna get an answer so quickly as to how much it's actually gonna cost, and I'm concerned it's gonna be a money pit. I'm all in favor of the move, we voted to, uh, move the shelter. Uh, I just think we ought to be cautious when we're spending taxpayers' money.
I, I agree, and that's why my propos, my position, I guess, is that keep it in, we'll get the data. It needs to be on the warrant if anything's gonna happen, and if something, if we don't get more specifics, I'm okay with tabling it. That's exactly what Selectman Pacheco was saying.
If, if the plan is, this is what we should do, and we've only got X, then it's gotta be, okay, this is what we're going to town meeting and ask for, and we got twenty-five in the grant money. Revice this plan because you don't have that money.
That's an excellent point, that it's not all or nothing.
We can scale back.
So, the next article, um, the highway garage roof is leaking, and so we need to do something about it. We need to temporarily fix it. I don't, I don't know how you feel. I have ideas about eventually moving the highway garage, I don't know how you feel about that, because we haven't really talked about it. Um, but obviously, that wouldn't be happening very soon, so we do need to fix it, the roof.
And what I would say is, we replaced the roof on the Van Geisen Hall. Because of the same thing, because we thought, hopefully, something could be done. And we replaced it when it wasn't really being used, all right, at least this facility, day in and day out. I think we're gonna have to do the roof.
And, and my position is, if something needs fixing, we're gonna fix it. We don't, we don't need to kick the can down the road on that.
So is this replacing the roof, then?
No, uh, repairing that section.
And we don't get any, there's no insurance that can offset this?
Not for wear and tear and old age. There's no Medicare for this.
What'd you call it, Medicare?
There's no Medicare for this, babe.
The next one's actually mine. I am requesting a hundred fifty thousand dollars for paving this campus. Now that we are in multiple buildings, well, I mean, poor prime time, we've always been in multiple buildings, but there's a lot of back and forth traffic. Um, we really need to make sure our parking lot's up to snuff, and there's a lot of dips and falls, and I almost fall all the time. Um, so I'm sure other people do. But I have spoken with Mr. Robert Rendon and requested that this come out of the Capital Stabilization Fund, and he agreed that that would be, this would become a, um, suitable project for that fund. So, the funding source from that will likely be from the finance committee, the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Do you think they're gonna support that? I mean, they were reluctant.
Well, Robert Rendon's on the FinCom, I would suspect he would.
He's a member, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's type of gentleman, he's probably spoke to other people before he answered.
Because we have to be concerned about depleting that account, so.
Absolutely.
And when, when you talk about paving, you're talking about in front of the Old Town Hall, in the back?
This whole campus, the whole thing, so prime time, Old Town Hall, and here. We need to engineer it, um, for a site plan, uh, we have to follow our permit laws. So, we would go through the process and present to the planning board. And, um, I just, you know, the amount of people, I, I don't know why, but I'm very shocked at the amount of people that actually come here and use the track and the events that happen here, it's all the ti, it's constant. Um, so I think that we really do need to do something.
Did we, quick question before we move on, there were also, over the last, you know, year or maybe even more, we have heard rumblings from the school committee about the need to, um, kind of re-engineer the Dighton Elementary, Dighton Middle School campus. Um, this might have been before, um, that you came, so I guess my question is, did we get any contact from them on this?
Is this the, is this the, the road that they wanna make? Oh, so I do know about that, but I haven't, they haven't asked for that. But at the end, they may not have wanted to, because we just funded the modulars, I don't know. Actually, I don't know, I'm making that up for them, I don't know.
Well, we're gonna have that, we're gonna restart the meetings with Dr. Azar, so maybe that's something that we can discuss with him.
Showed up a month early for.
In, in, just straight out common sense, they're going to, supposed to, in the spring, appoint that building needs study committee. Do you really wanna do anything to the grounds until you know if there's gonna be construction, because you don't wanna rip it all up?
Well, and then they put the canopies, and they were supposed to do the reconfiguration before they bolted a bunch of stuff. So it's just, okay, we'll let them handle this, and then we will, um, when you get back to a school committee, um, we can work on that.
The CPC, um, the next few articles are CPC, they need to reallocate some funds. The town accountant caught that, and so that's what those are. Because we had our fabulous intern, and we are anticipating his return during breaks, the town accountant has requested, uh, some money for the overtime, which I'm actually really happy and proud that we have an intern program, so I think this is a good thing.
Are they not, just, I, it's two thousand dollars, so I'm not gonna, um, belabor the point too much. But is it not possible to get the intern credit instead of money?
I think we have to pay.
Why?
It's for our municipality.
Some schools require that. Now, like BU, when we had that intern that did all the work for the Board of Health, uh, stormwater outfalls, um, the deal was, we didn't have to give her anything, we gave her twenty-five dollars a day for expenses, she came out from Boston. Did the job, did a super job, there was no requirement on the part of the school, but we looked into other internships and some of the institutions they're coming from say, uh, this is what we expect you would give them.
So, I was always under the, I don't wanna call it an assumption, because I, I thought I read this, but, um, that we are municipality, we have to pay. Because I remember being like personally upset about it, because I worked in the United States Capitol ninety-five, for free, for two and a half months, and rode the metro, which was very expensive. And I remember being like, that's, you know, back in my day, I had to work for free. I thought we had to, I mean, I gladly check into that, but I'm fairly certain.
For going forward, we should check into, because we have to, unfortunately, we have.
No, we, he's all paid, this is for basically replenishing.
The, the BU thing, uh, I remember the discussion, we felt badly that she was coming out and doing all of this work, field work. This was, you know, uh, work boots and the whole bit. And, um, that's when we finally said, well, we gotta do something. And the twenty-five dollars a day that she, each day she, when she was, she wasn't here every day, but when she did come here, uh, she got expense money.
I know for the state, the courthouse, we never paid an intern, they got credit for it.
So, going forward, but, you know.
I really, I'm sorry, I wouldn't say this in a meeting, I really do think that we have to pay them, like, I'm, that's my belief. So I'll, I'm gonna verify it, of course, but I wouldn't.
It's just more for going forward.
Oh, sorry, the next are two from the town clerk, and, um, my, I don't, I don't know if you care about my personal opinion. These are kind of small, small sums that I would expect that we could absorb in the budget somewhere, so I was surprised to see them submitted. But I don't know how you feel about them.
Well, my question is, and I have no issue with these requests on, you know, as they're presented. I guess my question is, purchase of a laptop computer, one thousand five hundred, I mean, you can get a new MacBook for a thousand dollars.
So this is the price from Terminal, which we've all decided that we're going to.
Has to be outfitted and all that, right?
With software, so this is the cost with the software, the backup, right, like, this is everything, and then making sure it's copied on the server, so we have all our documents.
Moving over files, all that?
I believe so, yeah, like, her, her. This is for her elections work, so she said, she was gonna buy something. I can't remember if it was an iPad or a laptop separately for just doing elections, and I said, well, why don't, how old is your computer now? And it's old.
It is.
And I said, why don't you just get a laptop and you can, so you have one machine with the documents on one machine, and you can use it for both, so that's where this is.
Totally fine with that.
The next is, um, to purchase a filing cabinet, again, I feel like we might be able to absorb this, but it's on there.
Well, but we can keep this on there and then find the money.
This, this is just everything that was submitted, I don't, um, I'm never gonna make the decision for you this week.
Is that a special file cabinet? That's, seems a little high.
Gold-plated?
Honestly, if you go buy a HAN, it'll be eight hundred dollars.
Okay, I trust you.
Well, I'm not gonna go buy.
You're not gonna buy a HAN?
Yeah, we're not gonna do that.
If there's a requirement that it must have a certain amount of fire rating, because of the records. They cost a fortune, like buying a safe.
Hers might have, I mean, I don't know all the.
I don't know, but the security.
Special security, I was just gonna say.
Oh, this one's for ballots, so that would be very, very much under.
That's what it is.
Special protections.
Thank you for being on it, Madam Clerk.
Harbor Masters requesting twelve thousand dollars for equipment additions and upgrades to the boat.
This seems like a lot of.
You weren't on the boat.
I'm, okay, touche, no, I definitely was not on the boat, but I just, I always see stuff, didn't we just pay twenty thousand dollars for a bunch of stuff for the, like, we're only, okay, maybe it wasn't twenty thousand, but I see expenses come across, and I just don't understand why, when this is like a three-month, four-month gig out of a year.
So he is looking, he did explain this to me, he's looking for various equipment changes, um, that would help him on the water. They seem justifiable to me, I mean, I'm not a boater, but they, they make sense, and then they would need a new roof, because you affix this to the roof. So, I mean, that's, he, he.
I'm just thinking it was a forty thousand dollar boom.
Didn't discuss it, Mr. Pacheco and I were on the boat together, we did not, as Selectman, discuss it. We stood there and watched, and Mr. Marino talked about the canopy, which is the roof, and showed us the, um, lights, they're all corroded. Part of the problem is, it's salt water, it, it's, it's, it eats the thing up, and these are the original equipment. So, again, we didn't comment on anything, we both just stood there, we asked some questions, oh, what does that thing do? And he showed us other equipment inside the, I'll call, it's not the cabin, but it's in where the captain is to drive it. Um, and he told us that was the rough guess, so.
So if stuff is getting corroded, and I, I understand about salt water and all that, are we making sure every winter that this boat is being winterized properly and being taken care of? And I'm not, I'm asking because I don't know. I have concerns when I hear that a brand-new forty thousand dollar boat is already being corroded.
Was it ten, ten years old?
I think, and the equipment he pointed out, it's that, it's original equipment to the boat. And you can look at it and see the corrosion, this is not, um, from not, um, you're like a wooden boat, you have to paint, scrape, it's not that kind of stuff, you can hear it, it's truly, it's been weathered, and it's been whatever. The boat is in good shape, there's no question about it. He wants to keep it that way, and that's why it's listed as upgrades and stuff.
I'm not sure about his policy on weatherization, I mean, to be honest, I haven't been around to go through the whole process. I know that there's some disagreement among some about where it should be stored and all of that, but I just, just anticipate this fall working that out.
It is on land, you know, um, yeah, location, that's been discussed, but, uh.
I'm actually working with him on policies anyway, like, just kind of shoring up, see what I did? Um, shoring up this department to make sure that it's operating to the best of its abilities.
Questions if you're watching, gentlemen. So I have no, I have no issue if everybody says that it's.
I'm okay with that, let's see what the finance committee says, but I'm okay with it.
I am too, uh, as I said, we did not discuss, I just sat, I just stood there listening. We both asked some questions, even then, we didn't discuss anything. Ron responded and pointed out and explained stuff.
This next article is seventy, uh, seven thousand five hundred fifty dollars to purchase and install a heating and air conditioning system for the second floor meeting hall, um, of Old Town Hall, sorry, the second floor meeting room of Old Town Hall.
And to Selectman Pacheco's point, not to belabor the point, and I apologize, sir. Um, this is now the third article regarding Old Town Hall, when we started this approval process back in October of twenty sixteen.
I was actually surprised to, didn't we vote on an AC unit for this?
It was downstairs, it was downstairs.
Yeah, it says upstairs.
There is heat upstairs, because the, I've, they had to move, there were two, there were two furnaces. And they relocated the furnace, I really believe that this is AC.
My, my point is, how did we not know that?
Will be heat also.
It's gonna be the split, it's a split one, so it's probably gonna be the same thing they have downstairs, but they're very energy efficient. You know, most town halls are using these now.
It's like what we got at our church, there is a, there is an oil-fired furnace, but when they air-conditioned it, when the weather is not horrendously cold, the, those, what you're describing, ductless things, they weren't fine. When you get that freezing, freezing weather, terrible, the boiler cooks on, furnace kicks in. Yeah, so that's probably what it is.
Since we're on the topic, I was under the impression, um, we were told by the building commissioner that this building would be done by October fifteenth, which is the special town meeting date, and do we have an update?
Yes, we have an update, um, it will not be done by the special town meeting update. However, they did make some progress, we talked about the ribbon-cutting idea, and he's gonna speak with Mr. Hershey about this, but we thought maybe doing something around the Veterans Day holiday, because I know Mr. Hershey does something, and it might be a nice space.
The breakfast is, this year's gonna be the, on the Saturday morning, the tenth.
Oh, so, okay.
Because obviously, the eleventh is Sunday, and the holiday is actually Monday. But, um, uh, he told me that in an email that, um, the Lions are going to provide the breakfast on. Because obviously the eleventh is Sunday and the holiday is actually Monday. But um, uh, he told me that in an email that um, the Lions are going to provide the breakfast on the tenth.
And did they do that on the pavilion?
It's Smith Hall, isn't it?
Oh.
Wasn't that?
Well, last year, they, the first year they did it, we used primetime.
Yep, and then it was at the church.
Then, last year it was at our father's house.
Yep.
Church down on the corner Pleasant and Main. I'm not sure of the location this year, but uh, I know the Lions are stepping up.
So it looks like end of October and that he would get that committee together, but.
I'm sorry. Mr. Ferry told me today also, cause I saw the trucks, and I said, hey, what's happening out front? And what they're doing is they were putting in cement pads, but part of the problem was, it looked like a good day, so they put the cement pad, they're working on it, and it starts pouring buckets.
All the day.
So they had, the rain caused some problems for them, but that's what they're doing out front, is the, the cement pot.
So we're pushing the date to November because it's not gonna be done?
Yes.
Do we have a firm date when it's going to be done?
I don't have a firm date. I have any by October.
Does anybody have a firm date?
I doubt it.
I have, we have been waiting, we approved this back on October of twenty sixteen. It is two years. And what I always hear is, oh, it's March. Oh, it's April. Oh, it's gonna be July. Oh, it's gonna be September. It's gonna be August. I think the people deserve to know when this facility is gonna be done. What did I say last time we were here? I said, why are we doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony? We don't have anything to cut, cause there's no reason to cut a ribbon. And I just feel like, and I don't mean to be, you know, kind of nutty about it, but it's very frustrating to me that when people ask me, oh, when's the building gonna be done? And I say October, and then it's a month later, and a month later, and a month later. And at this point, it just feels like it, it's just not getting done. And I don't know what the solution is.
For two and a half years, I answered those questions on the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge because everybody, everybody saw the barge being taken down to Somerset. Cause that barge was used to finish the Veterans Bridge. And they said, we'll come back to you. And that's exactly what happened. That was delayed two and a half years. But in any case, um, I'm not making excuses, but part of the problem, I told you about the sheet rock, which caused the cost thing to go up. It was difficult to getting somebody in to do sheet rocking and to get the bids, and then to have the guy show up and do the work. I, that's what I know about the sheet rock.
I just think that if, if we go into this special, we are, with Old Town Hall not being done, and then we ask for fifty thousand dollars for the animal shelter, and we say, yeah, it's gonna be done, this is when it's, who's gonna believe us? And I say that as someone who supports it, by the way.
I mean, my personal opinion is.
I agree a hundred percent with that. I think the problem with the uh, the Old Town Hall is, is that we've been given dates that probably weren't accurate to begin with.
Of course.
And we should be given a more realistic. I remember over a year ago, we were told, we can have a special town meeting, twenty seventeen in October, it'll be done. And it wasn't, so it's a year later. Now, I, I was part of the zoning board, so it's very nice work downstairs. I appreciate all the hard work that uh, town employees have done. It's gonna end up being a great building, but I don't like this. Continue going back to the townspeople. Number one, tell them it's not gonna open, not gonna be ready at this date. And secondly, uh, we're asking for more money. Uh, but I do, uh, this is probably the most economical way to heat, not heat necessarily, but to air condition upstairs. It needs to be done, uh, so.
But what my question is, if we knew that the second floor was gonna be used, why was this not built into the cost?
But I, I also think a hundred, to renovate a two-story building the way that it has been, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was not gonna do it. I mean, I think that.
That's the problem.
No, I, I agree. And I wasn't here when that whole conversation was had. I would've said it at this time, but I have some ideas on how to not have this happen again. So I'll just leave it at that.
Well, we can start, we can start with the animal shelter.
Exactly. Exactly. My apologies to my colleagues.
And I can tell you this, and again, I'm not making excuses, but I've, I've kind of stayed on top of it, um, cause I talk to Tom Ferry a lot. Um, yes, we were very fortunate to get highway licensed properly employees who are carpenters. However, they were not dedicated to this job simply because we started it, winter came. We yanked them off as we needed them. And uh, during the heat of the summer, the guys in that building were lucky, cause they did have a couple of windows, air conditioners, and they were able to work. But um, it's not like renovating your house where you bring a crew in and you say, this is the deadline, right? The last time I had some work done in my house, I said, okay, I want you to add one clause. If you don't finish on time, the date you tell me, and there is no good reason, there's a ten percent penalty. They agreed to it. They got it done ahead of time.
Of course, they had an incentive to get it done.
But again, that, that, that's a construction company. It's not like what we are doing, you know, with our employees, so. But anyhow.
I just think it's, it's just mind-boggling to me, and I, I promise you, Madam Administrator, I'm done after this. This is not directed at you.
Well, you're not done after this.
To think, yeah, probably not, to think that we are probably gonna have the police station be built before this, which is already a standing structure and it's a renovation, and I, I, it's tough work. I'm not saying it's not. That is mind-boggling to the average resident in town. How could you go from nothing to having this whole new building be built? And it got done a year earlier than that did, and that was a renovation. I mean, I don't have any good answers on that.
I do. A construction crew and a contract. That's what I think we should always be doing. We're going to contract out. I think they do great work. This is not anything to them.
I agree.
Jim is not a project manager. He's our building commissioner.
True.
And I would like somebody else that I can hold accountable to those deadlines, because they're not working on other things. They're working on that project. So that's how I plan to go forward.
And that's kind of what I was getting at, is we didn't, I, it just feels like we lost time. We came back three times for more money. It just feels like to people, we didn't save any money, and we certainly didn't save any time by doing it that way. And I'm, and I was part of the decision, so I'm not here pointing fingers. That's not what I'm trying to do. It's just very frustrating, and there are no good answers.
Well, and I, and the building's open. Like we have offices working out of there. It looks beautiful. Um, they're pounding away at what they do, and it's, it's an operational building. It's just a meeting room. And I don't think we'll ever be able to have a special town meeting there, just because it's only a hundred occupancy.
I wouldn't advocate that, no.
I just don't think it's right to limit in our minds, oh, we're only gonna have a hundred people there.
Hundred with the chairs. If we're allowed to use the benches, cause that has not been addressed. If the moderator allows those side benches to be used, cause I said that. We're gonna be able to use them. And they said, that, that's a moderator's decision.
Do they, well, I guess it's whatever's factored into the occupancy of the building.
See, they talked about chairs and all that. You know, um, I, I guess this kind of thing that you can move them in and out, you know, but.
Okay.
But we shouldn't have a special town meeting or annual town meeting there, because it doesn't fit enough people, so.
Well, I just think, right.
It, but the towns, the people in town can utilize, my understanding is they're gonna be able to utilize the second floor, and they haven't been able to do it in two, two and a half years. In defense for, for Jim Agia, he's, was kind of left, he was kind of told to run with this and take care of it with, uh, little guidance, I say, uh, from the board of selectmen who've told him to do it. And secondly, I do believe it's cheaper. I, I do believe that unless we went out and contracted everything, we saved, the board saved taxpayers some money by having highway employees work over there, the two carpenters. I know they're not working there every day, but they save us some money versus the police station. We spent a lot more money in the police station. We had a contract, had deadlines and everything else. That's why it's gonna be done beforehand, but over here was kind of piecemeal. You know, one day, the copper could be there, and next day, he's got something else he's gonna do for town. So it.
I agree, but if.
I understand the frustration, because I feel so many dates.
If that was how it was sold, do you think I would've supported that?
No.
What we were told, not to belabor the point, and I apologize, public, was, and I recall this meeting, we went to the meeting in October twenty sixteen, and we were told it would be done by March of twenty seventeen. So.
I think we were given some unrealistic dates. Almost from day one.
Off by a couple of years. We'll just leave it at that. Um, okay, and I apologize, public.
No, no, I'm sure my wife's sleeping by now, so.
You're good. Madam Administrator.
Okay, so the next one, the cemetery commission's requesting thirty-five thousand dollars to do the, I'm sorry, do you wanna speak on this?
No, I don't. I was not at the meeting when they, when they discussed this stuff.
So they are looking to add a GIS layer for um, gravestones? And this is the cost they have submitted. Um.
For all gravestones? Cause I remember there was a, do you remember, um, I believe it was Ms. Eagle Scout Owen Conti?
Yes, that's on there.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's on there. So he has a, just in case anybody wants to know, you can click on the veteran um, grave and learn a little bit about that veteran, which I think is pretty cool.
And like where it is and all that.
Right. And so we've actually had that uploaded to the GIS. Um, so this is to collect the field data for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Is this for all the cemeteries that?
To be honest, I don't know.
I know when Owen started, he was hoping to do all of them, but then he realized how many there were, and he concentrated on the community church.
I, I think this is only twenty, not only, it's a lot. I think it's twenty-five. I think it's the ones that are being mowed right now, um, that the cemetery commission has contracted out and mowed.
Yeah, cause we got so many out in the woods that they just cut the brush.
And we have some, I want to, not to belabor this, for those that aren't sleeping yet, uh, I took summary from Idaho yesterday to one of our cemeteries, the Fish Horton Cemetery on Smith Street. Three hundred feet into the woods, all brushed and everything else, to find some relatives of his from the eighteenth and nineteenth century.
Wow.
I'd been there a year ago. I sent them pictures. He happened to be in Hyannis with his wife, so he wanted to come, come down and look at it. But.
Cool.
It was pretty cool to see the graves and the gravestones and everything else, but uh, that's probably not gonna be a cemetery that's gonna be under this. We not, we don't maintain it. Probably prefer that it not be maintained at this point. Uh, so.
Um, Article twenty, the treasurer collector always puts us in for funding other post-employment benefits, which is a liability for us, so she's got some money in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the planning board is looking to amend the um, marijuana overlay bylaw that was just passed at town meeting. Um, I've actually reached out to the cannabis advisory board to see if they wanna meet on this and make a recommendation. So that's sitting in your email box.
They have a hearing on this. I saw it. I think I saw it in the paper.
Yes.
Is it October third, or is that?
I don't remember the date.
Uh, no, I think, I believe it's literally right before town meeting.
There were a few Dighton bylaw things. I thought I saw them there.
So they.
So what exactly are they changing? I apologize, Madam Administrator.
No problem. So the current bylaw does not allow marijuana establishments to locate within one hundred feet of a residential zone. And that makes most of the overlay district slightly invalid, because a lot of the buildings are within one hundred feet, like the existing structures on the land are within a hundred feet. So I know that one company is actually going before the ZBA for a variance to locate at a property that um, is within the zone, but the building is, within the overlay, but the building is within one hundred feet. The other changes are to allow the planning board to issue a waiver or variance or whatever, um, for industrial, for cultivation facility only. Cultivation-only facilities in the industrial zone.
Oh, okay. The mixed, the overlay, okay.
Right. So we will, I hope, I, I, I assumed that the advisory board would want to meet, so I hope that we can get.
You too.
Yeah, we are. He had to step away from the ZBA more.
No.
Um, so there are, I believe Kerry is giving Karen the most updated language, so we have everything there.
I just wanted to read some, I apologize.
There was some back and forth with the lawyers there, but.
Of course.
Just a quick question. Do, do we have at least one, two potential businesses?
Yes. It happened to be.
On the bylaw?
What's that?
Are they contingent on passing this bylaw?
Well, number one, company actually has a negotiated, I mean, we haven't voted on it yet, um, because they wanna change their location to this other location that doesn't conform. But that ends up being like a win-win-win all around, so that's better. Um, they're good to go as long as this variance happens with the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
The other one is a cultivation only, so that they wouldn't be able to locate here unless this bylaw went in. But we haven't done a letter of intent, as you know, cause that would be in front of you.
Of course, yeah.
Um, we haven't done any.
The community, cause that's, okay.
Right. But they need to know that they can locate before they start that.
In the spirit of full disclosure, I had told you this, um, and I guess I just didn't mention it, cause nothing has really happened, but I did, do you remember um, Dick Schaefer from Taunton Development Corp? He had been working with Green Harbor at that time. Um, I did reach out to him, and I just said, is Green Harbor still interested? They were the medical marijuana facility. Um, he said he didn't think so, um, because they had, they were already pursuing um, RMDs in other towns, and they were kind of far along in that process. But he did say he knew of other um, potential companies that would wanna come, since the, the way has been kind of paved. Um, nobody has to wait for a town meeting vote, although we do have to hope that people pass these amended bylaws. Um, so he said he will get back to me, and I will keep everybody um, abreast of that. I hadn't heard back from him. He was doing some research.
He's the man we dealt with for the hundred and fifty thousand for council vote, too.
Yep, yep. Yeah, he's done, he's worked with the town already, um, and he is with Taunton Development Corp., and he also, I believe, is an employee of the city of Taunton in some capacity. So um, he will get back to me, and as soon as he does, I will definitely let everybody know if, if that is fruitful or not. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Uh, the next one's a bylaw I've submitted. I had this up for annual town meeting, and then we took it off. Um, so this is just here again. This is um, basically memorializing the town administrator role in the town's bylaws. The Article twenty-three is um, to accept a roadway Mockingbird Lane. Article twenty-four is a petitioned article by residents, so as you know, we can't change anything on here, but they did petition us for Sylvia Way.
These people are smart.
And I believe all of those have been certified, but I, yeah. So it's on there.
Quick question, uh.
We don't have a choice.
Uh, to Mr. Pacheco, do you know anything about Mockingbird Lane?
No, I don't, but I believe that's still pending before the planning board. I thought I saw something.
Oh, they submitted it, right?
I, I thought I saw, getting back to the October third date, I thought I saw the planning board was gonna meet on, uh, on this road. And so my concern is, is that.
It's on here and.
It's on here. They haven't voted on it yet, but yet for Sylvia Way, we, we kind of forced the town residents to have to come up with a petition and get it on, when I don't think Mockingbird's already been approved by the planning board, but yet we're gonna put it on a warrant, so. I'm not opposed to it being on the warrant. Don't get me wrong.
So I am just putting together everything that was submitted. Um, some things I have, okay, so I just, I just, I don't know. I, I, I want you to know that I just put everything, you know, Karen actually does the work. So let's not say I don't do it, but Karen puts it together. This is everything that came in.
And I may be wrong, but I believe the planning board has not addressed Mockingbird Lane.
Okay.
Have they? Are you?
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm the HOA representative from Sylvia Lane, and I'm the one that, and my bunch of us, we reflect the signatures. I'm, I'd be a little bit hurt if, you know, we had to do all that, cause the planning board certainly hasn't helped us in any respect, as you know, as Pacheco. Um, so I'm just, so I don't know. I haven't heard about that, but I know the planning board said, for us, no, we'll get petitioned, and that's what we did.
Okay.
I feel like, I'm sorry, I didn't choose which to, this is literally everything that came in, okay?
I wasn't prepared to say.
And I wasn't prepared.
And um, they submitted this, so I mean.
Yeah, and you put it on, cause that's what we do.
That's what we do.
You know, unless something is totally, if at first we know if it's a petition, you gotta do it, right? And if it's a money article and you look at the dollars and you say, there's no way it's gonna happen, cause I remember telling the police chief, you're not getting the cruiser this time. Come back again.
Right.
But, but we always put the, the articles on that were requested, not by petition. I, that goes automatically. And when we go to town meeting, that's when the recommendation gets made, up or down, so.
I actually like that. I philosophically think it's a nice thing to do, to just, if it comes in, put it on, because you let the people actually decide.
I don't believe there's really, there may be, there've been one or two articles that we didn't, that came in that didn't end up going on, but for the most part, since I've been here, we, we put them on.
I can understand that. Um, I don't know anything about Mockingbird Lane. I do know that in the case of Sylvia Way, they voted to recommend it contingent upon a punch list. The punch list was not completed to the satisfaction of the planning board, and they didn't have, their engineer wasn't able to go out and verify. And then I remember speaking with you, and we, they did a petition, and they got the signature.
I think the good thing that happened, if they told you upfront, there's a good chance we're not gonna approve it, it gave you time to do this.
Yeah.
If they had not told you that ahead of time, and you waited, you'd have missed the warrant.
Right, that's true.
So I, I guess there's a positive side.
We also did put the pressure on you, make sure you got it in early, so good job on you.
Well, it's something to make sure of. We're, we're official, so we wait out there, and go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on.
You're gonna stay to the rest, you know, for the rest of the meeting.
You don't wanna join us for this lively discussion?
I hope so.
Nothing's open here.
I just wanna reemphasize, I am troubled if, this is still pending before the planning board, that's already on, and we made uh.
Sylvia Way.
Sylvia Way, uh, get two, two hundred plus signatures.
Well, we had, we, it was minimal, we needed a hundred legit signatures. We collected like a hundred and fifty-four.
Great.
Well, what we do know is the planning board did not put Sylvia Way on. Well, what we do know is the planning board did not put Sylvia Way on the warrant, correct?
And I know that they did this because of the punch list. That was their goal.
If they had brought it, if they said to you, there's no chance, it's slim, it's going to happen, and you didn't do it, you'd have missed the boat.
Yes.
But by putting it on you, if they came into us prior to tonight's meeting and said, we are going to do it, nothing is lost, but there was a potential loss if you didn't get the opportunity. So as I say, I understand the concern, but at least you made it.
No, I understand the planning board's position, because our contract, quite frankly, didn't, as you mentioned, complete what he said, what he promised. So that's, that's the person that's issue.
All those other, not to belabor this, but all those other, a lot of those other items had nothing to do with the road, and all that went before the planning board. And my wife and I, we walked the whole road to see about these big cracks in the road. I didn't see the big cracks in the road, to be quite honest. And the zoning board is holding on to $37,000. I don't believe any of the other, the cost to complete is a lot less than $37,000, and I'd be surprised if that developer doesn't furnish the other projects. So I would have hoped that they would have still recommended that the town take over Sylvia Way, so.
Do you know what that is?
Yep.
Madam Administrator, just for our own information, because I share selectmen Pacheco's concerns, can we just check and verify what's going on with Mockingbird Lane?
So my recommendation to you-
And I know we have to act on this tonight, so I'm not saying delay.
I think my recommendation to you would be make some sort of motion, like, you know, place all these warrants, all these articles as presented with the caveat of Article, I think that's 23, subject to verification-
Absolutely.
-of the planning board's recommendation, or some final vote, or something a little bit stronger.
My position is, they are elected officials. They know more about planning than I do, and I would just want to know, I wouldn't want to step on their toes, and I certainly wouldn't want to, you know, traipse on their autonomy as elected officials, so just a verification on that.
Just from a procedural standpoint, they haven't presented a warrant, an article in time for the deadline for the warrant, so for all intent and purposes, they're not going to be on the warrant. However, if by some chance they vote and approve this, when this article comes up, they can get up and say, by the way, the planning board did, or they can get up and oppose it. So the fact that it's on here, I'm sure we're going to hear from them. It may be at town meeting.
So, right, well, they submitted it. And my other thing is, perhaps that punch, like, going back to Sylvia Way, I'm sorry to switch, but like, perhaps that punch list ends up getting completed, and then the planning board, their meeting before town meeting, they could theoretically make a recommendation at the end of all this, even though you did have to do that work.
I'd rather the safety side.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't, I'm an eternal optimist. It's a bit of a flaw, I think, but the game's not over, you know? So we could still have a happy planning board and a happy group of residents, too. But I have no problem verifying that they've made the recommendation, like an actual vote recommendation on Mockingbird.
And my suggestion is simply to selectmen Blue Light's point, so when we go there, because I'm expecting we're going to put it on there, we, I'm certainly not going to support something that the planning board is like direly against, if that were the case.
Okay, yep, sorry, I wasn't-
I want to be, you know, I-
I want to hear what they get to say at town meeting.
Absolutely.
If they don't act before town meeting, one way or another, and even, regardless, if they take a vote before town meeting, negative or positive, I expect at town meeting for them to get up and speak on this article and tell us why they did or why they didn't, because the vote is out there. If they haven't been following these meetings, are not going to have a clue, why was this brought by petition? Okay? Well, we know why it was brought by petition, and then we still need to, you know, I realize it's not a financial article, but I can almost hear the moderator saying, is there a recommendation from the planning board?
Oh, absolutely.
I just see that.
Well, and they're supposed to move it. They would have to move, not the petitioned one, the other one.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So if they didn't end up recommending it, that it would just not, yeah, it would just pass. But I think it's totally within your authority to place it on the warrant with a contingent condition.
Yes, sir. We're just happy to have someone here.
I have a second question, so again, I'm concerned Sylvia Way, that goes up to town meeting. What, how, how do we pass? Is it two-thirds majority, is it simple majority?
A petition?
On the road, so.
It's a, because it's like acceptance, I don't think it's like a bylaw.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like two-thirds or anything.
It's basically just asking the town to have a certain way to become a public road.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's a majority.
It is a majority. It is.
I think it's a straight majority.
Our town council gives us that information, even though Mr. McKean probably knows us off the top of his head, but town council always weighs in on that, and these are currently under review by him. We've sent them to him. So another caveat to your vote, I would just ask, you know, under town council review, or, you know, pending any changes at town council.
Or a vote to be approved. I mean, it doesn't matter that it was brought to the-
No.
-town by petition?
No.
Does that have any bearing?
The only thing about petitions is that it has to be, as I explained, it has to be exactly what you signed, and that's what we did. And then it would just be whatever the item of, like, what it was. So like, spending from, say you wanted to spend from capital stabilization, that's what your petitioned article was, you'd need two-thirds, because spending from capital stabilization requires two-thirds.
Well, because we're not spending any money, we're just asking people-
Yeah, no, you're just acting for a road.
I believe it's a majority. We had, we had to approve Hillcrest and a couple other-
Cameron Drive up there.
Yep, and it was, it was a simple majority, and that was at a meeting a couple, a year ago, maybe.
This is certainly something I can verify for you. If you want, just leave an email or something, and we'll just contact you, give you, that way you have a definitive answer.
The other thing you need to know, absolutely, positively, when you submit by petition, we can't change anything, even punctuation. It will be reviewed by town council. If he finds anything wrong with it, he will make, he will say, it is not in proper form, or this is wrong, and it will not be voted. So we just, we just want people to understand that. We don't control that.
It is almost 10:30. We have almost been here for three hours, and we are still on the same page, so I would like to get the show on the road, because I am hungry and I have to work tomorrow.
So just for some clarification, I'm okay with Mockingbird Lane being on the warrant. I was just concerned about the procedure, how it got on to the warrant versus what Sylvia Way had to do. And secondly, I would like to, at what point can I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend that Sylvia Way become a public road? At what point?
We already did that.
You did vote on that.
We voted to recommend to the planning board that they accept.
So what I would ask is that on the 3rd, because we'll have the posted warrant and everything legally on there, we'll go through them, you can make your recommendations, one by one, or blanket a few, recommend them all.
Yeah, okay. I don't see that happening.
Making the recommendation?
No.
Oh, the blanket. Oh, yeah.
Blanket.
Okay, I don't know where we are. I have no idea where we are. Oh, we need to vote to place the warrant articles, and then you need to vote to sign the warrant articles. And everything needs to be pending town council review for the warrant article.
I make a motion that we prepare the warrant with the articles as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. If there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
So you should be aware that if you hang around this late, you get appointed to some committee.
We can't vote.
I think you have an interest in some committee.
Planning board.
Zoning board.
It is maybe.
Mallory's going to get it.
Next item.
Is it F?
I believe it's to sign, yeah.
Sign the warrant.
Oh, sign?
I look at my desk. I'm sorry. Like, I like really spread out over here. I'm sorry.
You're getting comfortable over there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board sign the warrant as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. And thank you for being so patient, Madam Administrator, and-
Oh, sure.
Mrs. Brady. And next on the, do you want us to sign that right now?
We have it prepared, right? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just the, you know, I always know to ask. You know me, I'll try to sneak out.
So I will talk while you sign, if, okay. So the clerical union contract, we're finally ratified on both sides. Everything's all set. Excuse me, we're finally voted on both sides. We just need to ratify an open session. This is not a money anything. This is a language change.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that we ratify the clerical union contract as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next is a discussion of right of first refusal for Chapter 61A land located at Zero Maple Street. We did get a letter from the planning board recently that recommended them, us, excuse me, to waive our right of first refusal from Chapter 61A, Madam Administrator.
So this is actually forest land, so Chapter 61, which as a nerd, I'm really excited about, because I've never had one before. Anyway, what this person's looking to do, he's subdividing the lot, and he has filed this Form A application. Everything's all set. The assessors and the planning board both recommend to waive the right. We have not received anything from the conservation commission, but silence means no.
So what we're doing is essentially paving the way for our houses to get built.
It's not our land, though.
No, I know.
Okay, well, I mean, it could be, but, yes, it doesn't look like it's a buildable lot, but he has land, and he is-
It's 49-plus acres, right?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation, so I'm going to make a motion that we notify the property owner that we waive our right for auction to buy this property, based on the recommendation of planning and the Board of Assessors.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next, we have a recommendation from the fire chief in support of Alex Green's tuition reimbursement. Alex is a member of the fire department, and Madam Administrator, did you, anything you wanted to say?
Yep, you may remember during the budget, way back when, it feels like forever ago, Alex did submit interest that he would be doing this, and we did place this in the budget, and he submitted a transcript and a receipt. I'm prepared for the town accountant's request, so once she rece, you know, returns, we'll get that to her. So this is just to, we need you to vote to authorize this.
I am fully in support, so I am happily accepting motions.
I'll make the motion to approve the request of Alec Green for tuition reimbursement upon successful completion of his classes. Maybe just go to BCC, see?
He's at, we have the transcript. So the only, BCC, so neither myself or Chris McGee has opened the transcript, because it says right on there, it's not valid if it's opened.
Of course.
And I want to make sure that the town accountant is the one to open it, just so, so I can actually verify the grade right now, but I'm sure he wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't passing. But just so you know.
She's on her way home.
Exactly. So just so you know, at this moment, I don't know for sure, but I wasn't going to open it until the town accountant did it.
Well, as I said, upon successful completion, and that's the answer you're going to get.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alex, I just want to thank you for taking us up with our Board of Selectmen's support of professional growth and development, and I appreciate it.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next, we have a recommendation from the Board of Health to reduce the number of members of the emergency preparedness committee, and I have reviewed this. It is, aligns with what, I know I was outvoted at that meeting. This aligns directly with what my preference was. I don't know what my colleagues think about it, but I'm okay with it, and I think this is a great recommendation.
I think before we act on this, because I'm going to move to table it, I'll tell you why. First of all, the agenda, when this was voted, I was not at the meeting, I was not notified of the meeting. I checked all my records. I'm the person that was being removed, along with Mr. Agia. He wasn't removed, he was reduced to a non-voting member. So number one, I was not notified. Number two, it was not on the agenda, therefore you can't act on it. They reorganized their committee, and then they went right in and made the recommendation to reduce the committee down to five. So when I looked at the, I got the minutes from Ross to find out, how come I didn't go to the meeting? I wasn't aware that the action had been taken until the meeting of August, we haven't approved it yet, August 30th, I think are the minutes. And what happened was, we had a discussion. The only reason I knew about that meeting is because somebody tipped me off, and I turned up, and they handed me documents. I didn't know what was on the agenda ahead of time, again, because I wasn't notified. But anyhow, I got the agenda here. So anyhow, the meeting proceeded. We discussed stuff back and forth. We got to a point where they needed a vote for, it was a piece of equipment, oh, I think it was the traffic signal thing. So the motion, they called for a motion. I started to make it. I was interrupted and told I was not a voting member and couldn't make the motion. And I said, we need to get my status clarified, because, number one, I was appointed by the, the title was appointed chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
After that, the chairman left. You assumed the chairmanship. You didn't support it, and you worked days. I was the only man left standing. So I was the one that was supposed to fill in, until I thought we determined, we get another member, and I don't object to Mr. Pacheco filling in. I object to the fact that they did not follow the process as far as putting it on the agenda. They did not notify me, and I am appointed, I think it was February 28th, as a full voting member, as was Mr. Agia. So I believe there are a number of violations of the open meeting law. Now, at the meeting, when I said, when I was interrupted and said, you can't make that motion, which was incorrect, and the person who made the motion later apologized to me for doing that. And I said, we're going to clarify my status, because, number one, I wasn't notified, and now I'm making a motion, and obviously, I'm still a member of this board, because the Board of Health could not remove me or the person holding the, sitting in the chair as the Board of Selectmen representative, because the appointing authority for that committee is the Board of Selectmen. We know that, we did it. The way you, and I explained all this, so the way you back this thing up, the emergency preparedness committee must vote and recommend to the Board of Health and give the reason why they want, I said, me removed from this board. You haven't done that. Now, if the Board of, you get your majority vote, the Board of Health then must go to the Board of Selectmen and say, we want this person removed from the committee. Well, what they've asked for is removing, reducing the committee down to five positions, which is what they wanted the first time, and they left Mr. Agia as a non-voting member. When I checked the minutes of the night that the appointments were made by the Board of Selectmen, there was only one non-voting person, and that was the town administrator. My whole problem with this is they have not followed the open meeting law, they have not followed the way you put agendas together. I think they need to start over, and I am, as I said, I have no objection, if it ends up, that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the position, is still part of the committee, a full voting member. I don't have to serve. It can be, whether you got time, if it's happening at night, if you choose, or if Mr. Pacheco's designated. I was the last person, it was you and me, and for them to do this was wrong. It was wrong to do it to me as a person, but they didn't follow procedure. So I'm going to move to table this until they do it correctly and bring it to the board, our board. After they do the back-off meetings that I have requested, and that I'm notified, and if I want to attend, I should be there. They're still going to vote it. I don't, I don't think there's any question. It's going to come back to this board, but I don't think it's right to act on it tonight, because quite frankly, I think it was very unprofessional, the way they did it, and the fact that they didn't notify me ahead of time that there was a meeting and it didn't appear on the agenda, that's certainly violation. and it didn't appear on the agenda, that's certainly violations.
I, may I? I think, I just wanted to add, I, I don't know, I never got an email or nobody ever told me that this situation had been evolving. But I think the reason they didn't, they said you were a non-voting member is because I think I was supposed to fill that spot. And obviously I can't go to the meetings and I don't recall us ever picking somebody else to be the person. Am I correct on that?
I don't, it was, okay, I'm gonna back up.
Like that vacancy, because I can't make it, was never filled.
So this used to be the disaster committee. And that was like nineteen people and we were like, "That's too much."
That was a disaster.
So we, what'd you say?
That was a disaster. It's late.
But, um, okay, so we had a, I, Chris McGee, Todd Pillings and Tom Pires met and talked about the makeup of, I think Chris McGee was there, now I don't remember, the makeup of what would become the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Because we all agreed that nineteen members was too large. That charge was a directive of the Board of Selectmen when they were here to be appointed and it was gonna be from nineteen members to like twenty-one. And everyone was like, "What are you gonna do with twenty-one people? A quorum is eleven or twelve." So we met and we crafted basically what this is, what they've now done. We came here, Jack was still a member, he was actually the chairman at the time. And he was insistent that the selectmen be represented.
Votes two to one.
Yeah, I remember.
I believe...
February twenty-eighth.
Okay, I believe the outcome of that was that the chairman would serve on the committee and the other selectmen could go in the, in the chairman's stead.
But not voting.
But not voting.
Yeah, I remember that.
The next...
You need to look at the minutes of February twenty-eighth, because I did.
Okay, do you, I mean, I don't have them here tonight, so I can certainly do that, but...
I went online and read them last night.
So the next vote was that this Board voted to make the Emergency Preparedness Committee a subcommittee of the Board of Health.
Correct.
So then it falls under the Board of Health, in my opinion, it falls under the Board of Health. So I think, I don't know about the minutes and the open meeting law and the agendas that you're referencing, because I don't have them in front of me. But to me, I think making the recommendation to the parent Board would be the Board of Health, not the Board of Selectmen.
They're not the appointing authority. The Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority.
But if you put it under the, as a subcommittee of the Board of Health, why wouldn't the Board of Health be the appointing committee?
For example, we appointed a, um, a committee for the town celebration.
Sure.
Three, uh, three hundred. All of the committees working relative to that were supposed to be subcommittees of that committee. There was like a split off and a separate distinct committee was appointed to do other things. No longer part of the anniversary committee, but they worked on it. When the, when I offered to do the book and I did it under the condition, number one, you make me a subcommittee of the anniversary committee. I report back to them, they report back to you. The Board of Health reports to the Board of Selectmen. They are not a separately elected committee. It's the elected Board that appoints committees. Now, if the Board of Health had the authority to appoint people, you're correct, they are not the appointing authority. Now, what, and what I said at the meeting that day, in all the years I've served, I have only seen an attempt to remove somebody for a reason. And fortunately, we investigated the reason and we found out, uh, it was because of a serious illness and this Board did not take action against that person. Now, all I'm saying is, you can still do it, but follow the rules. You can't take action on an agenda item that's not there.
So I know that and I'm not, I'm not really talking about that because I don't have that information and that's absolutely right. If it's not on the agenda, you can't make the decision, but...
But it's on our agenda tonight.
It's on our agenda.
So... May I make a point and, because I just wanna take the personal out of this. They, I don't think they were trying to remove a specific person. A, I was the person and I don't feel offended that they tried to remove that position. They weren't trying to stick it to anybody. I think it's kind of pointless for us to discuss what happened because we have the chance tonight to either rectify it or to accept what they recommended.
All I'm asking is that you, we table it tonight, we send it back to them, we tell them that the, uh, the subcommittee of the Board of Health needs to meet and take action on this and put it on the agenda. Now, here's the minutes, okay? Um, this is when they did it. They didn't organize the committee, that is not, when you reduce the committee, that is not organizing it. It's when you, this organize the committee means, you know, uh, chairman, if you have a vice chairman, clerk, so forth. This was stuck in at the very end. It was, this should have been a separate agenda item. The other thing too is sporadically, I've, I, I, I personally have been given agendas. I didn't get this one. I attended the meeting when, um, Denny Paniff came, all right? And she talked about whatever. Um, the only reason I went to the one on August thirtieth is because somebody came to me and said, "Are you gonna be at that meeting today?" And I said, "What meeting?" They said, "The emergency..." I said, "I didn't know about..." Yeah, it's today. I says, "Yeah, okay," so I came. That's when I found out the action that had been taken. Excuse me, in May. All I'm asking is back it up, do it correctly, bring it back to this Board. They're not meeting again, I think, until probably sometime in October.
But if we're the appointing authority, we can vote tonight to make it back. And you know, I'm not gonna second the motion to table simply because, as you know, I was the one who never wanted someone on the Board of Selectmen on it in the first place.
Yeah, the, the process may not have been clean as to how they, they did this. But we can make a motion, and I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that the Emergency Preparedness Committee be reduced from seven members to five members. And that those members be the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, Chairman of the Board of Health, Health Agent, Highway Superintendent, and the Building Commissioner as a non-voting member as well as the Town Administrator as a non-voting member.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion, discussion.
So this means we view, we, the Town of Dayton, view that you are the sole appointing authority, regardless of subcommittees or whatever, just so I'm straight?
Yes.
Okay.
But the committee itself didn't vote...
I understand...
Legally to remove those positions.
I understand your point there. I'm not disputing anything about open meeting law. I'm just trying to make sure I'm operating how basically you guys want me to operate.
I almost feel like, given the, the potential, um, steps that were kind of missed, we actually are obligated to fix this.
I believe that you're oblig, so there's, the time for a complaint at the AG's office has actually lapsed because you only have thirty days.
Correct.
May third, thirty days would have been June third. So, um, or second.
And I wanna tell my colleagues...
No, it's thirty days from when you find out about it.
Oh, I thought it was thirty days from the, like, the event. I, I'm no attorney, so...
I found out about it August, uh, I think it was the August thirtieth meeting.
About a couple of days.
Well, you got some time.
I don't think we should go the AG route.
I don't either. I just, so he was bringing up steps. I think by making that vote, all I was asking was just so I'm on the same page that I believe and know that the appointing authority is the Board of Selectmen, that's all I was asking. I'm really not trying to comment on the open meeting law part of it.
I wasn't there, you know, I don't go to the meetings, I'm not here during the day, so...
And to set, send this back to the, uh, Board of Health. We're gonna get back to this point at some point anyway. I think that this is very motion, so let's just resolve it tonight.
Just, just to add information to the general public, the reason why Selectmen Taylor and I supported this was specifically because there will be no member of the elected executive board serving on this committee. They'll be part of the larger committee, but our concern was, we're gonna have no clue about what's going on.
But their job is to inform us on what the plan is in an emergency, which is my role.
So my role is to update you periodically on what's happening here with these meetings.
But that hasn't happened since we started.
That's, I'm sorry, that's untrue. I've, I've actually made the update that they changed their membership at a meeting and I remember you were upset and you wanted the minutes and the Board of Health had not met yet until July eleventh and I couldn't get those minutes because I think this was time of men.
They told me they didn't meet July eleventh. I asked for those minutes and Ross wrote back and said they didn't meet.
Well, I don't know how that, they're referencing their July eleventh meeting right here. I don't, I, again, I don't know about that and all I do know is I did, I do make the update because I view that as my role on that committee is to update the Board. Um, most of the people involved in emergency response are not on this committee. So their job is to actually roll out the plan and make sure everyone knows what their job is and they do those emergency drills and stuff. So I think that that's not...
I don't question that. I had questioned, I questioned, I know what the vote was, I know why the vote was taken, I know why the vote was the way it was. The fact of the matter is, I have not, up until they did this and until this Board of it acts tonight, there, I believe it's been deliberate that I have not been notified. What, whenever a selectman is required to be present somewhere, we have always made sure if one of us can't go, the other one goes. We've done that. We've even had to split up and say, "We got three different, not even voting events. We got three events this weekend. We need to put in an appearance, which one are you gonna cover?" I mean, and to say that because I wasn't named specifically, nobody was named specifically, but the chairman was unavailable, I would always cover. I mean, I've covered meetings that I've gone to that I bring back all the info because I really don't know what's going on. But I only do it as a selectman. All I'm asking for is common courtesy and to just do it within the regulations. I, I know how the vote's gonna go. But I think the public has to recognize what has occurred here. And quite frankly, if Mr. Taylor was sitting on the Board, I don't think we'd be having this discussion. But I think they have seen an opportunity and they've taken advantage of it. Let's just do it correctly, that's all I'm saying. And now you tell me they met June eleventh.
This is what they're saying.
They said that they, it's, it's right here. I, I don't know why Ross would have said that, but...
Well, I, I, I can show you the email. I, I did request it.
So then...
I did request it and she said, "We didn't meet on July eleventh. I sent you," and she told me the two, which she did send to me, email.
May I make, may I make a brief, just to kind of break this up? I, we all know the five, the seven people on this list, right? We all know these people. They're all good honorable people. I refuse to believe, maybe I'm naive, that they were purposely trying to stick it to Selectmen Goulart, me, you, uh, Town Administrator Aaronstein. I believe they didn't feel that they had to keep specifically Selectmen Goulart in the loop. And again, please, people on this list, forgive me if I'm getting it wrong because I'm the appointed official and I cannot make it.
No, not by name, no, by title. But as I said, we don't let, if one of us is, if a event occurs, whether it's a business meeting or a town event, and a selectman is expected to be there and the chairman, who is normally the person that goes, can't make it, we don't sit back and say, "Hey, I'm not going, I'm not the chairman." We don't do that. We always step in and help.
But an event is not the same as a meeting, you can't vote. You know what I mean? Because it's the chairman that votes. So even if you went, like, you can't, you're non-voting. Am I, am I correct?
No, you are the voting member.
So...
You're filling in for the chairman.
No, I don't, I don't read it that way. I mean, if, if the Fire Chief didn't make it and he sent the deputy Fire Chief, I don't see how that person gets to vote.
That's not the same.
It's very specific.
You get sworn in.
Police Chief.
You get sworn in.
Highway Superintendent.
Correct. My name is on the Emergency Preparedness Committee appointment form. And, uh, you know, I think that their response was, "Oh, you're not the one who is appointed to vote, so you can't vote." It's not like, "Oh, we just don't want you to vote, we, we think we're injecting politics into the emergent," none of that. It was just simply, "That's what I think." Because they're good people and I don't think that they're out to, um, get one over on the Board of Selectmen.
I agree.
I think we work well with them, why would they, I, I just, I don't wanna think that, basically. And I don't believe that.
Do you vote on my motion?
There is a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? The motion passes.
I'm gonna ask, do we take a short break?
And I'm gonna be happy that you asked.
I don't know how we, do we go into recess or...
Three, four minutes?
Three, four minutes.
Three, four minutes. No, no, we're almost done. Cable, we're just taking a very brief three, four-minute recess, we'll be right back.
Well, if they shut off, maybe if they shut off the system, it mutes, I don't know. I gotta talk to them about how it could be. No, it's okay, it's all right. I wonder if we can dispense with the reading of the announcements. I'll ask if we can dispense with the reading of the announcements. Because he posts them, I mean, it's not like they're not pulling.
No, they'll hear us. We're all set, cable.
Or at least, I think they still see us on cable.
They took a break.
They probably took, yeah, they might, yeah. Does anyone have a flare gun?
We know.
The SOs.
Now, we, we have, we are moving on from Agenda Item Eight, I, but I do just wanna add to my colleagues and to the public, none of what we just voted on precludes any one of us from going to that meeting, observing what they're doing, taking copious notes, asking tough questions. That's all still the same.
And reporting back to us.
And reporting back, right?
Well, that, I'll, I'll do that.
All right, next is Eight J. It's the Energy Reduction Plan, um, and do we have an update?
Yes, we do.
No, it's okay, Mrs. Brady.
Eric Garbini, who is helping us from Serpide on this initiative, the Green Community. So he is compiling and crafting this policy. Both Karen and I were like, "Wait a minute, we need to file this." But he said this is not, um, going to impact our application deadline of October first, so, uh, once we receive it from the...
Wait, it's the first of October?
Did I make this up? Because there's other grants that are the first that are in my head.
It's not the first.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's like some time in October. Also, um, Mr. Pickering is like monitoring that, so we're not gonna like miss our deadline.
Okay, cool. And he knows I'm like very scared of messing stuff up on this one, so he does, him and Eric do a great job.
You're not gonna mess, you never mess anything up. What I, I do wanna point out, it is a plan, so this is not something, um, we need to read three times and then vote on. It is, it is a plan that goes into the application and then we submit it. So School Committee also had the same question, so it's, it's not a policy per se.
So this is, this is us stating how we're going to reach that twenty percent savings in energy reduction.
Exa, and outlining like prior, uh, energy usage, um, and then ways we can improve, which will then guide the Town of Dayton and this Board. which will then guide the Town of Dayton and this board, um, on potential projects that would help us to achieve that 20% energy reduction over the next five years.
I must've told myself October 1st, so we didn't miss it. I think I-
If, the earlier we're ready, the better.
Earlier gets the worm. So he's working on it and once it's ready, he'll get it to us and it will show up on Agenda when we have it.
Perfect.
Is it a policy or a plan?
A plan.
It's a plan.
So we should change this to make it a plan?
Absolutely. And it's literally called, "The Energy Reduction Plan," as outlined in the, um, Green Communities, uh, Program Guidelines. And I, that, that's why I said that, because then you have to read it three times, it's gonna be a very long document. But we should at least, like, present it, you know, even if it's after the application goes in, whenever we get it, and then present it to people and kinda give the key points, so people are aware.
Um, we're skipping K and L, we've already done that.
Yep.
Uh, the vacation request procedure, this is on here per Selectmen Zagrafas. And in your packets, you have a draft form that lays out kind of what it would be if you needed to request vacation or an extended, you know, planned sick time, like maybe you have a surgery coming up and you know you're gonna be out for two weeks or something. I don't, if, if you have anything to add, this is just for you to review.
I just wanted to add, I filed this, uh, vacation time away request form not as micromanagement at all. We trust, I trust and respect everybody, um, that works for the Town of Dayton. I see this as a way to professionalize. I mean, here we are, we're doing performance evaluations, we're revamping our policy manual. I also think this will help people within a department coordinate their own vacations, so they make sure they have coverage, this one's not overlapping with that one. Um, so that's kind of where my mind was at, um, when, um, this idea was sort of, um, came to fruition. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
When I know people are going on vacation, even if it's just a week, I do operate in a diff, like, I use that information in how I operate and how I conduct my day or week, either to get whatever I need done before they leave, save stuff for after, or whatever, and plan. So it is actually helpful for me. Uh, and I will say, people do a pretty good job about letting us know, but it's nice to, to have it, um, normalized.
My question to you, I probably should've asked you this a long time ago, so forgive me, okay? Is this something, I feel like I always ask you, that will, can there be a grievance spawned from this due to a CDA?
You can only grieve something if you're a union employee and it's an item in the contract. That's how you grieve something.
And this, this doesn't restrict anything?
If somebody could prove how this would be an unfair labor practice-
I'm sensing this is a tough-
I don't feel this is an unfair labor practice to notify your employer when your vacation is, but, um, and then I know, I don't know if you wanna talk about this, about limiting the number of consecutive weeks?
Yes, I'm, I'm glad you said that. So, I understand the desire to, um, go away on a lengthy consecutive vacation. My concern is, especially for, like, you know, the people we really, really rely on, like, department heads, I do think we need to think about what is too long for a vacation. And it's not that we don't want people to use their vacation time, or that we don't want people going on vacation. It's more to retain the everyday functionality of the department, but still allow the employee to, you know, enjoy their benefited time. So we're not restricting anything, but I do think we should, we should come to sort of a, um, consensus tonight about what is, what is too long for a consecutive vacation. And I'm gonna open it, I've been talking.
I personally feel that, uh, people are entitled and should be able to take up to two weeks vacation time.
I'm okay with two weeks.
Uh, but more than that, I'm not sure how you wanna handle it, but they have to get a special requ, I don't, I don't think it's automatic for more than two weeks. I know when I worked, uh, for the state, I very rarely took up to two weeks vacation, because I came back to my desk and- a lot, there's a lot of workload on your desk, I don't know how other people do it, so I think a week, maybe 10 days, but two weeks was really pushing it. Going to more than that, I think it's, it's difficult for us, it's difficult if it's a department head, for the employees in that department. So I, I don't know how we do that. I mean, this form doesn't address that, but I, I do agree, we, we need to come up with an agreement that, what we consider a reasonable amount of, of vacation.
I totally agree, and I, I think, um, anything more than 14, you know, consecutive days is just, um, even if you have the benefited time, again, we love benefited time, like, take your vacation. But our job as selectmen is to ensure that the departments are still running smoothly, that the town as a whole is still running smoothly, that the people under the department head have the appropriate guidance they need. And I just think anything longer than 14 consecutive days is just sort of, could be detrimental.
I think they, there may be exceptions. If somebody is ill, they're running, they used all their sick time and they, I mean, they're seriously ill and they've got vacation time on the books and it's more than two weeks, that's something we have to take into consideration. But those are gonna be, hopefully, those are gonna be rare situations.
And I'm sure they would be. Selectmen Goulart?
Uh, I think it's discriminatory in that as a department head or employee, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, it should read as a non-elected department head, which further discriminates because now the relative number of people who are department heads or employees under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen has just shrunk remarkably. You cannot tell an elected official how much vacation time they can take. Now, what we know is that we have, uh, department heads under the jurisdiction that aren't appointed, uh, excuse me, that are appointed and not elected. We've got one, two, two under contract that I can think of with labor contracts. One without a labor contract, one outside the building. Inside the building, one department head that I can think of with no labor contract. And then we have Karen in our own office, cuz the other employees in this building work under the jurisdiction of department heads and pretty much belong to unions, so you can't do that. So the people that would be most affected by this, because unless the department heads that are under contract, that are not elected, unless there is wording in their contract that says they can't take more than blank days of vacation in a row, you can't enforce it without renegotiating the contract. That brings it down to two individuals who are department heads, um, one inside the building, one outside the building, who would be affected by this. Uh, and you could enforce that or inform them, they must comply. So I got concerns about this. Now, I haven't gotten into the, um, employees who are appointed and fall under another board, like the Board of Trustees at the library, um, the Council on Aging, um, but I'm just looking at, uh, department employees. So it can't be department, you can't say all department heads or a department, you cannot tell an elected official.
This isn't saying that. It says, "As a department head or employee, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen." So it would apply to anybody that would be subject to the evaluation.
Can I just eliminate that down too? Eliminate the fire chief and the police chief? Because if their contracts don't limit their vacation consecutive, then they can take whatever they want, and you would have to negotiate their contract.
Well, if it's silent, this would apply. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head if it is, but if it's silent, this would still go.
It brings it down to, uh, department heads appointed, not elected, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, who are not under any kind of a contract to the town accountant and the highway superintendent.
And the building inspector? The building inspector, the Council on Aging Director?
Well, she does work for the council, that's why I didn't bring her in, I'll bring in the library, the librarian.
But they're not the appointing, so library is their own elected board, right? So they would do their thing, but you appoint the Council on Aging Director.
Okay, and she doesn't have a line there.
Potentially, I think you would appoint, based upon our action with the Emergency Preparedness Commission, I would argue you appoint Todd Pilling as well.
I would be cons, well, he's not a full-time employee.
But he's an employee. So it's anybody subject, it would, it's the same crop of people subject to the evaluation, I, I would say. Like, that accounts for the Karens.
The problem I have is, um, the unfairness comes in where, if by chance you are elected, or if you have a contract that doesn't restrict your vacation, it's mute on it, you can go ahead and take what you wanna take, when you wanna take it, as long as you provide coverage in your department. Now, I am not aware that we have had lapses in operation of departments cuz somebody has been on vacation for a period of time. And, and the other thing too is, we're talking long-term employees that have been doing this for literally years.
So, my contract limits my vacation to two weeks tops. And I don't have a problem with that, because to Selectmen Pacchico's- Right, and it says, it specifically says it. And like Selectmen Pacchico, I don't wanna imagine what my desk would be like in two weeks, at all. However, you're talking about fairness, it's not exactly fair to give me this contract that limits my vacation when everybody else, literally everyone else, can take six weeks in a row. I mean, I signed that contract, so I'm obviously okay with it. But I honestly didn't know that this town allowed long-term vacations. And I probably, had I known that, I wouldn't have been-
Until recent, like, this wasn't an issue before.
But I've said from day one, and you and I agreed we were gonna sit down and go through your contract and your job description, which we really haven't done, because there are things in the contract and the job description that need to be changed, and I am certainly interested in talking about. I also was a government employee, I was only required to give advance notice that I was going to be gone. And when you take a cross-country trip in a vehicle not flying, you cannot do it in two weeks.
So I don't, I'm not gonna comment on that, because that's not really what I think this discussion is. I think it's a matter of, how long is too long to go without a key person? And I would argue a department head is a key person.
A leader, a leader of the department.
And this isn't a personal attack on anybody. Um, I actually think things went pretty well for having two people out, two significant people out for three weeks, essentially at the same time.
Well, that's why I asked if there was a, a situation that I wasn't aware of.
I mean, there were a couple things here and there. Are they dire? Are we gonna die about it? No, but it's enough to- When these two requests actually came in, I made a comment asking about it, because I think three weeks is a significant period of time.
You did. And my position at that time was, A, we had never had, since I've been here, I know, you've been here longer than me, so you might know more about that issue going in the past, but, um, we had never had people going on three weeks of vacation, so it was never an issue before. It was never anything that required discussion. I think the longest vacation anybody took since I've been here had been two weeks, and that was like a maximum. And there, there were some hiccups, I guess you would call them, um, nothing major.
We're not being bowled over.
Nothing major, but it's kind of almost like, it made me realize that there could be a potential issue with that.
It's enough to have this discussion, I guess. There was enough that happened to have this discussion. And, I mean, it's ultimately your decision, I kind of like the, two weeks is normal, but anything more than that, you have to receive special advanced notification. But then we would be able to line up who's in charge, like, what, what, what is your plan? Have you finished X, Y, and Z?
That's part of their job. Now, if they aren't doing that, if somebody goes on vacation and doesn't have the ducks in a row, that's, that's a performance problem. But we're still getting back to, you can't require this of elected officials.
I'm not trying to, we're not trying to. It says, "As a department head or employee, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen."
But my point is, there are employees of the Town of Dayton, they are elected, but they are employees of the Town of Dayton, and I think labor policies should be relatively uniform when you talk about basic benefits, that's what I'm saying.
But they can't be, they can't be, right?
We have no-
Because you have elected officials and we have employees on a contract.
They could decide not to show up, ever, and still get paid. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. We literally can't, until the town decides if they would be appointed. Exactly, like, the voters, the voters go to the polls and they do their thing.
Well, there is the thing about fraud, and if someone's getting paid and they're not performing their duties and they're not sick, I mean, this is, this is the conflict of interest law. If you are submitting time cards and you are not performing the duties, even if you're under a contract, that's fraud, we know that. So, that's not the same thing. By the same token, we know if a person goes out ill, because we have, we've had people on long-term, uh, leave for illness, you might have a situation where you don't know when they're coming back. Now, obviously, people in that department, if it's the department head that's out sick, obviously, there is a, a row, a, a, a chain of command. People are doing this, this, and this. Probably somebody has sort of assumed a, a leadership role in the department. But to tell somebody that has, let's assume, well, first of all, you don't get three weeks coming through the door. You have to be here a period of time and you earn those, unless you have past prac, uh, performance that gets recognized, whatever. But when you think about it, if somebody has to work, and I'm not sure if it's 10 or 15 years or how many years it is, and they plan a trip or a long cruiser or something, and there's a chance that because of something else, that could be denied, I think that's wrong.
Well, that's why it would be a special request, under special consideration. I support the form, I support the logic and rationale behind it.
I like advance notification. If you're going on vacation for a week, two weeks, three weeks, a month, whatever, uh-
I think that's just necessary.
I would like advance, you need to give advance notification. So, not only that, not only to your supervisor, or if you're a department head, whether elected or appointed, so that your fellow workers know that you're going to be away. It's kind of a courtesy thing. But, um, beyond that, um, you know-
I just wanna say this, that I don't, this is not, this is on here at the request of Selectmen Zagrafas. I do not feel negatively towards the two individuals that did take their vacation. I think they did everything they could to make sure their departments were fine and set up, and they had plans in place to take care of the services. And I think that they both made themselves available to their staff, should anything happen, which is pretty, in my opinion, pretty remarkable for somebody who's like, "I'm going on vacation." There are people out there that say, "Don't bother me," and they don't get bothered. So, I just want everyone to know that. I don't, I don't think anybody did anything wrong here, at all. This is just-
Absolutely not.
My personal opinion, based on this discussion, I think three weeks is a significant amount of time to be away and you will have a lapse in service regardless of the best-laid plans. There's just nothing you can do about it.
Just if you've worked 15 years to get your three weeks, cuz you're gonna take that long trip and there's a chance, there's a chance you might be denied that third week, that's wrong.
When you earn the three weeks, you're not guaranteed to take the three weeks. Nobody's taking those three weeks vacation, right. Nobody's taking a three weeks vacation away from people.
But, but lack of-
It's, you know, when you take three weeks off, regardless who it is, you're putting more work on the person who's sitting in that office.
That's true.
And that's what we have to also take into consideration, the extra, you can, we, when somebody takes three weeks, there's somebody else that, who's making decisions that, say, for example, the department head should be making those decisions. Uh, so, I do think, I do agree that there's gonna be exceptions, and I think we ought to be able to, to deal with that. I think giving a two weeks notice for three weeks of vacation is not ample, it's not good at all. I wouldn't want somebody coming in and saying, "I'm going away, in two weeks, I'm going away for three weeks or more, uh, and because I have, I've earned this vacation time, so..." I think we're gonna be cautious with, I agree, we ought to be cautious with. I like the form here, I think we need to add something about what happens when you wanna take more than two weeks. I don't think they should auto, they should automatically assume it's gonna happen, that it's gonna be approved.
I take exception to your statement that when you're out for a period of time, they are leaving work behind. I have not experienced that. In my 20-some years at the regional high school, that's when I finally got to the point that I could actually take four weeks, which I didn't. I did take three weeks, because we started doing cross-country trips. When I left that office, first of all, all the work that I had to get done to meet the state requirements for finishing the fiscal year got filed with the Department of Ed. So the reimbursement numbers went in there, they could start working. Uh, and we didn't have, uh, the cell phones and the, um, uh, you know, the computers and the texting and all that stuff. The whole point was that I had taken care of everything that I needed to do. The supervisory part of my job, as far as signing the payrolls and that, that was handled by the superintendent, cuz he knew that in my absence, he would just say to, and I won't name names, "Are you all set?" And they said, "Yes." I can also tell you that he actually was gone for six weeks, because he went to Budapest to NEASC Evaluation of the American School. And we set up a process- And we set up a process with three people, and I was one of them, that the school, department, district, union, region, whatever, it was, it was a full region at the time, yeah, because with that superintendent it was. Everything worked fine because everybody knew what was going to happen, and there were no problems. And I kept a notebook, a log, day by day. When he came back, it was sitting on his desk. He could read a diary. We did not hear from him because he was still behind the iron curtain at that point in time. But it all worked, and it's all done by planning. Now that we've really gotten into this, and two people have been zeroed in on, and I think it's unfortunate. I want, I'm looking for fairness across the board. I mentioned that as a, and I said, insert the word, as a non-elected department head, that's going to be clarified. We know that they're in different circumstances. I'm only looking for fairness. But to think that somebody who has worked, I don't know how long you have to work depending on what your job is to get the 15, uh, the three weeks vacation after X years, and if you're planning a cross-country trip, um, and there's a chance, a chance, maybe it's slim, that you're going to be told, or if you, for example, if you're going to do a cruise for any length of time, you have to book it so far in advance, and you've got to put, you've got to pay for it in advance. And I, I just, I'm just concerned about that.
And you need to get permission in advance. So, if you're booking, spending money on a cruise-
I'm getting this form in right away if I'm, if I'm spending money. I can tell you that-
As far as elected officials, nobody is telling me if I skip the next six meetings, that I'm going to get penalized for that. I'm going to not get reelected if I choose to, to run again, so.
We never take vacations.
That's the problem.
Uh, can I just-
I mean, we could all give examples of our own employment, you know? When I worked, uh, and I took a vacation, somebody had to see my clients, somebody had to handle my court.
It depends on the job.
That's right, so it's-
Do you know, in my place, and I'll, I'll stop, nobody wants to hear about my life, but I will say-
Yes, we do.
You can't even, at my, at my job, you can't, I can't even get ti, I can't even get a day off if someone else doesn't agree to work my clients' cases for me in my absence. Won't even, not even a day, not even, like, a dentist appointment, doesn't matter.
We have to get coverage.
I think we have, and we have, as managers of this town, the right to put forward certain expectations and standards as what we're going to deliver and how we're going to deliver it. And my personal and professional opinion is that allowing anybody to take three weeks vacation does not get us to that standard. And this is, again, I'll repeat it, this is not related to the two individuals that happened to take three weeks vacation. I just think, and I said it before, when the request came in, and it could have been Santa Claus because he needed to go get prepared for Christmas. It's significant. The town is at a detriment when any of us is gone. It's like a missing seat at the table.
But what do you do if they're out sick?
But that's a temporary thing.
It's not vacation, that's the end of the world.
But if it's extended, you can operate in certain ways and put in your place. Like, that's an unexpected thing. I just think that we are allowed, as managers, to put parameters on how you're going to use vacation time. Sick time, no, we, we really don't have that.
As long as it's applied failing, no, sick, sick time is not temporary. I consider vacation temporary because if somebody says, "I'm taking three weeks," I expect them back in three weeks. If somebody goes out sick and circumstances go on and on... I actually worked with people who went out sick and never came back because they passed away, and it was long, long term. In that case, we were able to hire, I'll call them substitutes for lack of a better term. But I'm looking for fairness across the board. That's what I'm looking for. We've got to apply, if it's a, a rule, a policy, a procedure, or whatever. And I feel uncomfortable this isn't fair.
I don't under, I'm really trying to grapple with that argument when it was, it's fair to put in an evaluation procedure that handles these same people, but it's not fair for vacation. I'm, like, missing the link. I don't, I don't know what, what is that, how is it not fair? I, I just don't understand how it's not fair to ask people about vacation, but the same people are going to be subjected to evaluation. Like, it's the same group.
Do you think this should say, "Non-elected"?
No, because I think it says a department head under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm, pretty clear.
So, I mean, maybe you would like, as an employee or a department head, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen.
No, it's clear. It makes sense.
So, I just, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, I want to understand what you're saying and where you're coming from. I'm just missing this, this piece, this link of how it's not fair to-
All right, so if you don't insert, forget "non-elected."
Okay.
Got all the employ, all the department heads in this room.
Who does this?
You start dividing them up, there is going to be a group that you can't require this of, correct?
Yes.
That's my point. Vacation is an earned benefit that I think should be applied equally across the board. If because somebody holds a non-appointed position and is entitled to a four weeks vacation, and we have people who hold appointed positions and are now, been here a long enough to get four weeks, I think it's really unfair that we say to the appointees, "You've got to do the form," but we cannot compel elected.
So, why was the elected official ever given those sorts of benefits? There's no personnel bylaw. So, how did those benefits fall into the elected's lap?
Going back, I don't know when, I don't know if it was when the town government-
Yeah. So, I think the, the thing here is that having a personnel bylaw would solve all of this.
Elected, elected, um, officials, um, have followed the benefits of the people they supervise, even when they didn't have union contracts, okay? It goes back to Timbuktu.
Right, so I can understand that. So, if that is, if they have to follow it-
They should follow it.
They should follow it in whole. I mean, I, I just-
And it, it might be a goodwill thing with them.
Right. I know we can't make them, and I think that, like-
That's why, this is exactly what I'm talking about. I feel for basic benefits that everybody gets. You're, you're an employee, a full-time employee at the time, and you fall into this rule, and you're, you're going to earn over the years, this, 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 and this. But then this comes along, and they just back up and say, "Not me."
Well, it's like cherry picking, it's like cherry picking. You're picking what you want to adhere to, so they're getting all the benefits and none of the hard work, essentially, quote-unquote, "hard work," meaning evaluations and, like, policies and strict rules to follow by. I understand the argument, but if that's the way it is, and that's how it's always been, if we don't have a personnel bylaw or a policy in place to change it, we're really kind of just talking in circles about it because we're not going to-
And I don't think that's an argument to do nothing. Like, what do we just throw everything? We can't do anything. I don't think that's what we do here.
So, that being said, I think maybe we should bring this back to another night because it is getting late, we're not going to solve-
I think we ought to send it to department heads and say, "Give us some feedback." They need to find a way to do this that comes out fair across the board. Realizing that, let's say, I'm an elected official, you're an appointed official. So, if my attitude is, "Well, it doesn't apply to me," and you say, "But that applies to me." With everyone working together and talking about coverage and all of that stuff, smooth operation, I think, I don't know, it might be worth asking.
I don't know if it's necessary to ask them about this kind of thing. I think we need to, like, I think I'm tired and so I'm just going to be blunt, but like, we are the managers of the town, and I appreciate feedback and I like other people's perspectives, but sometimes there's a time for it and sometimes there's a time not for it. And I worry a lot that we constantly are asking them, "What do you think we should do?", instead of telling them, "This is what our process is going to be." Our conversation about the evaluations going into the union contract, and we said, "Well, the elected officials won't do it, so let's just wait." And it worked out better because now we have this process and we can base it on this process, and I think that's wise. But I walked away from that thinking like, "Why are we letting them dictate what we are going to do? We are setting the policy, and we are steering this ship, and we are putting in our standards." And I just, I don't want us to give away that authority over things like a vacation time request.
But we realize that we have elected department heads that got a legal ruling from town councils telling them-
That they don't do anything that we tell them to. I, yes, I know that.
I understand that.
But it doesn't mean, I'm not going to march in there and say, "You now have to fill this form out." I'm never going to say that because I understand that they are elected and we have no control over them. But I am going to say, when Karen needs to go on vacation, she needs to let us know at least two weeks in advance. Or when Alice goes on vacation, she needs to let us know in advance. And nobody hasn't, like, I'm sorry, that's just going to be the way that it is. We can talk about the length limit that we want to at another night, but I think-
Advance notice.
Right, no, I know, but, like, I'm using that as an example. I think we are very much giving away a lot of our authority, and that's not the message I want to send.
Are you saying that in running the asylum here?
I don't think, like, that's a negative stigma on that, so that's not what's happening. But yes, that's the principle that we are-
What she's describing is she is trying to get her hands or arms around authority she believes the board should have that has not existed and doesn't exist right now. She's looking at this from an overall managerial thing and saying, you know, if we could get this in. The problem is, it's gone, it's gone on forever.
I know.
You know what I mean? So, and that's what I'm saying. I don't have problems with uniform, treating everyone fairly, and uniform, uh, requirements or whatever. I don't have a problem with advance notice on vacation. My fairness issue is, there are some employees that you can't enforce it against. Now, that's why I'm saying, if the approach is from a positive standpoint, this is what we're trying to do, and I'm certainly not giving away authority because at this point, we don't have the kind of authority to do this that you're talking about. All I'm saying is, I'm trying to get this, uh, done through a, um, a cooperative, a goodwill spirit type thing. I don't want to edict stuff because there are some people you can't do it to. I truly believe that. And I sincerely say to you personally, you and I, under what the board talked about, we were going to sit down and talk about your contract. And absolutely, if you've got that limitation in there, quite frankly, I don't know anyone that's got that kind of a limitation in a contract. So, we definitely need to look at it-
No one has it, that's my point. I'm the only one.
Right, but I'm saying to you-
It's not fair and equitable, that's what you're saying.
It needs, we need to look at that and bring it back to the board and get your particular case straightened out because it's not fair.
I'm also not reimbursed for my master's degree. Again, I, I feel that that recognition, but I feel that recognition is built into my salary. So, I, I don't have problems with these things. But if we're talking about fairness, and it's not, it's a benefit that other people are getting, and I don't get it, and again, it's built into my salary, so I don't really have this problem. But if we're talking about fairness, I think we need to set up a standard. And that standard, in my opinion, would be a personnel bylaw that outlines what our benefits that are to everybody who calls the Town of Dayton their employer, that's what you get. And that's what I think would solve the fairness-
And who's not under review in your contract.
Well, exactly. So, it would be that these, it's a catch-all to the ones that don't have contracts or anything. So, I mean, we're not going to solve the world's problems.
Well, before we get to that stage, truly, we need to talk about yours, and we need to bring it back to the full board.
Well, my pin is, I hope you renew my contract, but I plan on coming back to you during this next evaluation and negotiation, and I'm going to actually ask to extend my contract, hopefully, if you'll have me.
We're getting, we're getting off topic.
We are getting off of the topic.
I just want to make one comment.
So, that's when I would like to do that, that's what my point is.
I don't think we should be crafting a policy and then saying, and it, all policies need to be fair. Because my big thing is that a policy is only useful if it's fair and equitable, both in the way it was crafted, but also in the way that it's enforced. But I don't think that it's considered unfair that some people won't care about this form and not use it. We, how, that, that's not-
Well, kids, we're applying, not, they're not applying-
I know, no.
But what matters is where everybody's-
What I'm saying is, that's their decision to not use the form and to just say, "Okay, we don't care, yeah, we're not listening." That, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to do anything for the people who do fall under this, and, you know, we can't stop elected officials.
Oh, I agree that, she made a suggestion, I think. I think she made a good suggestion.
Okay, we'll work on this again because I'm exhausted. Okay, creation of the beautification committee? Or do we want to act on this?
How about if we say, uh, we are going to, um, put this on a future, uh, make a motion to put this on a agenda for a future discussion? And then there's time to look at it and think about it, and it, as opposed to just table it? No, I, I think it needs to be discussed again.
Do you want to take it under advisement?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the vacation slash time away request form under advisement for a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask this, but I know that there is not anything anyone could say anymore. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next on the agenda is creation of the beautification committee. I have no, I, I think this is related to, like, a cleanup committee?
I'm kind of confused in this whole concept. So, somebody came in talking about, "We have a lot of people that like to pick up litter and keep Dayton beautiful." I agree, I think that's super nice. And the idea came about that we should have a beautification committee.
Was it Tom?
I think it was Tom Ferry, but, I mean-
And they don't have meetings, they just go and pick up trash together?
Well, no, there's some kind of organization.
I don't know. He, I don't know. So, I would like to table this for a future meeting. We'll float it out there. Anybody wants to head up and spearhead this committee, let us know.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the creation of a beautification committee under advisement.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next is a recommendation of the Development and Industrial Commission to appoint a new member. We did receive a, an email from the chairperson, Vicky Piazza, and they have voted to approve Dan Higgins as their newest member of the DIC, which is awesome. And so, we need to act on their recommendation.
Is it the gentleman, Thompson, who's in?
Yes, yeah, that's him.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that Dan Higgins be appointed to the Development and Industrial Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I think this is great, this is exciting. All those in, and thank you, Mr. Higgins. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. Next, we have a couple, um, appointments that we need to rescind. I'm surprisingly perky right now, okay?
It's adrenaline.
We are, right? It's the prospect of having dinner. So, the first one we need to rescind is Chantel Crystal Rocha of the Open Space Committee. Do we want to do these one by one?
Why don't we go both, just all together?
We'll do my, I'm going to let somebody make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we send the votes to appoint the following. Chantel Crystal Rocha for the Open Space Committee. Paul Bodine, is that correct? I'm not sure if I'm, Bodine. Communication dispatcher, and Rachel Reposa, constable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes. We do, under correspondence, have correspondence from Serpide requesting feedback from communities[1663.41] from communities and the public regarding transportation in your community. Um, so they are seeking assistance.
We'll be posting, yes, if they want-
Okay, we will post, and this is cool, so we're not gonna read it. But there is a, we'll post this, there is a Survey Monkey site, um, where you can use electronically to give your feedback, so we will get that on the website for everyone. And this is part of the packet on the website as well for anybody who's wondering.
I'm going to request that we dispense with the reading of the announcements, um, unless that's very important to you, because we do, we do, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I know.
Yeah. Just a clarification on the affordable housing lottery. Wasn't there a cutoff date? I thought we had at one point. The September thirteenth, obvi- obviously, that means already happened at the Dyton Library, but there was a cutoff date for these applications.
I thought it was tomorrow, but I don't wanna say because I don't-
It doesn't, they don't have a date there.
It's right on the table out there.
I don't recall a date. I don't. Not as-
Or do we postpone by October twentieth?
This, oh, it's eleven. We're all okay, public.
Don't come, police.
For anybody watching this.
Um, I do wanna mention this. Flu shot clinic hosted by the Downton, Dyton Council on Aging will be held on Thursday, October eleventh, from twelve P.M. to two P.M., Lower Level, Dyton Town Hall. Bring your insurance card, and if you have any questions, call Rite Aid at five oh eight, six seven six, three three seven zero. Be sure that it has been at least one year since your last flu shot, because if you get the shot and it has not been a year, Medicare is not gonna pay for it, so be aware of that.
And I did put that on the website at the request of the Council on Aging, so thank you. Uh, do we have any selectmen's reports this evening?
I just got two quick ones. One is that I attended the Aggie School, um, Farm-to-Table event. It was very well attended. Um, that was last Saturday night. Um, and, uh, the other thing was, Mr. Ferry mentioned this. Uh, he and I went to the statewide conference for municipal officials and staff uh, out at Holy Cross this past Monday, and as he said, the governor and lieutenant governor was there. Uh, but we picked up a lot of good information, and we will be bringing some, uh, suggestions for possible additional grant applications that we could get. And one more warning, actually, I got three of these in less than three days. Phone calls and mail. There are a number of people trying to convince you to sign up for other electrical services. I've gotten them from somebody saying they ever saw us. I've gotten them from somebody that says they're National Grid and some unknown somebody I hung up on. Don't do anything with your electricity if you are happy with aggregation, just don't do it.
You should've stayed on the line and toyed with them a little bit.
Some of them are recording and they go on and on. If you hang up, it keeps talking and the phone rings. But anyhow.
Selectman Pacheco?
Uh, just that the three of us attended the, uh, Bank Rehoboth Regional School Committee meeting last night. And I think we, it was very helpful, at least for me, anyway. And I see some progress in that agreement. I think we're gonna be able to work this out. And I believe we're also gonna meet with the Board of Selectmen in Rehoboth sometime in the future, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Just so the public knows, we are waiting, um, for that, the school committee to kind of incorporate some of Rehoboth's changes and then get back to us.
I think you oughta read those.
Oh, yeah, well, no, we're definitely reading the, we have to, um, we have to vote on some of these. Um, so again, the school committee will incorporate or not, um, the changes that Rehoboth has set forth. Um, and then, uh, they will send the document to both boards. We will meet. Um, and then, uh, I just presume there will be changes that will get sent back to the school committee before they vote on a final draft that then goes to the towns, uh, to vote at town meetings. Um, so this will go before the people, for anybody wondering. Acknowledgements. We have an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of one hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Next, we have the retirement of Tim Hogler from Mannheim Auto Auction.
I asked this to be on here. He's been a, um, very gracious partner with the town, uh, specifically with the fire department, the police department. And, uh, I just thought that the board might wanna wish him well in his retirement and future endeavors. And thank you for all the support.
Should we do a letter?
I thi, I, yes. If I have it on here, I think there should be a letter. I think it would be nice.
Mr. Hogler, thank you. We appreciate the, uh, relationship that you have with our public safety departments, um, and we appreciate your service very much, sir.
And for all the Dyton people you employ.
Absolutely. Amen.
He was at the touch of truck. I got to meet him.
Yes, I was just gonna say. Uh, okay, next we have, ugh, this one's close to my heart. An acknowledgement of Serpide's Bill Napolitano for receiving the Environmental Protection Agency's Lifetime Achievement Award. Um, Mr. Napolitano has been instrumental, not just in the town of Dyton, becoming, you know, a right-to-farm community, doing the agricultural commission, but in the entire county of Bristol and probably the state. Like, I, I doubt Bill is the type of person to ever say no if someone had a question about anything. Um, I know he was very pivotal in the city of Taunton, city of Taunton, um, agreeing to form an agricultural commission. So, Bill is a mover and a shaker, and he's a dedicated, uh, public servant, and, um, is just an amazing person and, and a wealth of knowledge. And if anybody deserves the EPA Lifetime Achievement Award, it certainly is Bill Napolitano. Did anybody, I know you work with him as well.
Yeah, yeah. He's excellent. Whenever you ask, he's there.
He, he had, um, success in having the Taunton River become a wild and scenic river, and that brings in a significant amount of grants to this whole area. So, his work is paying in dividends.
Also protecting the Three Mile River all the way to the confluence.
They gave up on us. Okay.
No, I wonder if it's-
We didn't even get the concom. Next, we have the Dyton Conserv, the, the most important thing. We have the Dyton Conservation Commission is going to be recognized this Monday by Save the Bay for their work on Broad Cove, and we were just finalizing the time.
We don't have any more information. I'm sorry. I thought that we would.
We're trying to get that information ironically enough from Bill Napolitano, so we will get that information and let everybody know, certainly. Uh, next, minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August twenty-second, twenty eighteen, selectmen's regular meeting.
And?
Yeah, you do them together.
And.